Good evening, everyone. I welcome you all as I call the May 19 City Council meeting to order. And as a reminder, we still continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings, and both staff members and members of the public may be joining us tonight remotely via WebEx. First item on our agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I invite you to join. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Since it is the month of May, it is the month of proclamation, so we have a lot of special business this evening. First proclamation this evening is ID 1887, Kiana Hunter proclamation, and I'd like to invite Kiana to join me over here. And this is pretty exciting because we have an Olympic champion in the room tonight. Not sure this has ever happened before, so it's pretty exciting. Whereas the city of Issaquah celebrates the success of members of its community and takes great pride in recognizing individuals who bring honor and inspiration through their outstanding achievements; and whereas Kiana Hunter, a cherished member of the Issaquah community and a former employee of the city of Issaquah, has achieved a remarkable milestone by earning a silver medal in artistic swimming in the 2024 Olympic Games. And whereas becoming an Olympian requires tremendous dedication, sacrifice, and unwavering commitment, qualities that Kiana has exemplified throughout her athletic journey; and whereas to not only compete in the world's most prestigious athletic stage, but to earn a medal is a testament to Kiana's exceptional skill, talent, and relentless hard work; and whereas Kiana Hunter serves as a role model for aspiring athletes and a source of immense pride for the entire Issaquah community; now therefore I, Mary Lou Polly, the mayor of the city of Issaquah, do hereby proclaim May 19, 2025, to be Kiana Hunter Day in the city of Issaquah and encourage all residents to join us in celebrating her remarkable achievements and the inspiration she brings to our community. Would you like to say a few words?
Sure. Gosh, gosh. This is amazing. Thank you so much for having me here tonight. I feel so welcomed when I realized that this is going to be put together by the pool manager I grew up working with, Zach Listen. I was like, wow, thank you so much. This is amazing. I want to say I grew up here my whole life. Issaquah is my home. I feel such an honor to be here and to have represented my country the past summer in 2024 Paris Olympics. It was an amazing experience, something I will never forget. I am so proud. And it was our first time qualifying as a team for the USA artistic swimming in 16 years. So it was a huge deal to be a part of that team. I just felt so honored and proud to be chosen. And Issaquah was a big part of that journey. So thank you so much. Thank you, guys, for being here. And yeah.
I know your parents are here as well, so if they'd like to come up, we'd like to do a picture with you all. Come on up. Pretty thrilling, pretty thrilling. The next item under special business this evening is ID 1842, National Safe Boating and Paddling Week proclamation. And I would like to invite Coast Guard Auxiliaryist Willis to the lectern to meet with Councilmember Martz. And also, I haven't got it written in front of me. Councilmember Martz, who else would you like to invite up?
We also have Coast Guard Auxiliaryist Blackstock.
Come on up.
If you'll join us as well. Up front. Whereas the National Safe Boating Week is coordinated each year by the National Safe Boating Council and its boating safety partners across the United States and Canada. Whereas over 100 million Americans, for over 100 million Americans, boating continues to be a popular recreational activity. And from coast to coast and everywhere in between, people are taking to the water and enjoying time together boating, sailing, paddling, and fishing. And whereas, on average, 650 people die each year in boating-related accidents in the United States, with the vast majority of those accidents caused by human error and poor judgment. And whereas, this campaign serves to remind us to keep safety front and center all season long. And whereas, a significant number of boaters who lose their lives by drowning each year would be alive today if they had worn their life jackets. And whereas, the city of Issaquah is adjacent to Lake Simamish and encompasses numerous other waterways; now therefore, Mary Lou Polly, mayor of the city of Issaquah, does hereby proclaim the week of May 17 to the 23rd to be National Safe Boating and Paddling Week in the city of Issaquah. And she encourages all community members to make responsible decisions when taking to the water for boating, sailing, paddling, and fishing activities and to wear a life jacket. In witness thereof, she did set her hand and seal of the city of Issaquah this 19th day of May, 2025. Would you care to make some comments?
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, Mayor Polly, esteemed members of the Issaquah City Council and fellow residents, thank you for the opportunity to address you on this important occasion. As a proud resident of Issaquah myself and a dedicated member of the U.S. Coast Guard Auxiliary, I am honored to stand before you today to accept the proclamation of Safe Boating and Paddling Week. This proclamation serves as a powerful reminder of our shared responsibility to ensure the safety of our waterways and to foster a culture of responsible boating and paddling within our beautiful city. Safe Boating and Paddling Week is a valuable opportunity to raise awareness about the importance of proper safety measures, such as wearing life jackets, following navigation rules, and ensuring vessels are in good working order. By adhering to these guidelines, we can greatly reduce the risk of accidents and promote a safer environment for all of those that enjoy our waterways. I would like to express my gratitude to Mayor Polly and the city council for their dedication in promoting a Safe Boating and Paddling Week. Your proclamation not only reflects your commitment to safety of our residents, but also helps create a safer and a more enjoyable experience for all those that use our waterways. To the public, I encourage you to take this opportunity to familiarize yourself with boating and safety guidelines, to make a conscientious effort to prioritize safety in all of your water-based activities. Remember, a little preparation goes a long way in ensuring safe and enjoyable experience on the water. In closing, I would like to remind everyone, while we enjoy the beauty of our waterways, safety should always be a top priority. Through education, awareness, responsible boating practices, we can work together to protect our loved ones and preserve the joys of boating and paddling in Issaquah for generations to come. Thank you, and have a great Safe Boating and Paddling Week.
Thank you. And thank you, Councilmember Martz. Thank you for coming and sharing that message. Next up, I'd like to invite for proclamation 1839, Emergency Medical Services Week proclamation, Eastside Fire and Rescue Deputy Chief of Special Operations Doug McDonald to the lectern. And Doug, why don't you bring your team up as well? Because I see you've got a big team here. And Councilmember Hall, thank you for doing the presentation.
Yeah, of course. Yeah, we have some members of, I believe, Station 71 across the street here, so come on up. And while they do, I'll just say, you know, as Chair of the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors, it's my honor to give this proclamation today. It's equally special to be giving it to Doug McDonald, our Deputy Chief of Special Operations, because he'll be retiring later this year, soon, actually, right?
June 16.
Very soon. So, you know, we're going to be having a ceremony to honor him, of course, and his years of service soon. But I just wanted to say, kind of on a personal level, I've always enjoyed how eager you are to answer my questions about anything and everything, demystifying EMS, how EMS is run in King County, apparatus procurement, trail rescue operations, and things like that. And just thank you very much for your years of service. All right, so whereas, in 1974, President Gerald Ford announced and authorized the first National Emergency Medical Services Week; and whereas, medical services are a vital public service; and whereas, the members of Eastside Fire and Rescue stand ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week; and whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness and injury; and whereas, emergency medical services have grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine; and whereas, the members of the Eastside Fire and Rescue Weather Career Reserves engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills; and whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value in the accomplishments of emergency medical services provided by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, Mary Lou Polly, the mayor of the city of Issaquah, does hereby proclaim the week of May 18 through 24 to be Emergency Medical Services Week in the city of Issaquah. And we all invite the community to join us in thanking Eastside Fire and Rescue for their service and outstanding contribution. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, on behalf of Eastside Fire and Rescue, we'd like to extend our heartfelt thanks to the community, to the council, to the city for their ongoing support, your trust, and for standing behind our first responders. It truly takes all of us working together to ensure the health and safety of our community. Thank you again for this proclamation.
Would you say for a picture as well?
Absolutely.
I think Councilmember Hall would love to. It's a huge group. Did you want to?
Yeah, let's go over here.
Put it in the center. Thanks. Next item under special business is ID 1841, Public Works Week proclamation. And I'd like to invite Public Works Director Emily Moon to the lecter with Councilmember Ray.
Thank you. Very exciting to do a Public Works proclamation. I am thinking it's just fascinating, having just had my 61st, 65th birthday, that this year marks the 65th anniversary of National Public Works Week. Whereas, the 2025 national theme, People, Purpose, and Presence, highlights how Public Works makes communities safer, more vibrant, and a better place to live. Whether serving as first responders, responding to electrical outages, or making roads and sidewalks passable after winter weather events, Public Works is always there when people need them. And whereas, our Public Works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustain and resilient communities and to public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of the city of Issaquah. And whereas, these infrastructures, facility, and services could not be provided without dedicated effort of Public Works professionals, engineers, managers, employees of all level of government, and in the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste systems, public buildings, and other infrastructure and facilities essential for our community. And whereas, we pay tribute to the substantial contribution these individuals make to protect our health, safety, and quality of life. Therefore, Mary Lou Polly, the mayor of the city of Issaquah, does hereby proclaim May 18 through 24 to be Public Works Weeks in the city of Issaquah and invites the community to join us all in thanking Public Works Department for their service and outstanding contributions. Director Moon?
Thank you all for the recognition. On behalf of the almost 70 employees in our department, those employees are responsible for operations and maintenance for streets, water, sewer, stormwater, our capital projects, our engineering and transportation and utilities, tons of administrative functions, and an environmental science group that is responsible for all sorts of great things, including solid waste. So on behalf of that big group who love to come and serve this community every day with hard work, devotion, and with the city's goals in mind, I say thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Ray and Director Moon. The last item under special business this evening is ID 1884, and it's a recognition of Jen Davis Hayes, who has long worked for our city and is moving on for a new position. And I just want to say a few words about that. So today, we are proud to recognize and celebrate Jen Davis Hayes for her outstanding service and dedication to the city of Issaquah. Jen first joined the city on September 16, 2013, as our Economic Development Manager. And since then, she's made an incredible impact across multiple departments and initiatives. In July 2018, Jen took on a special assignment as a project manager, where she stepped in to oversee the permit center in what was a unique job switch with another manager. This role showcased her versatility, leadership, and deep commitment to cross-department collaboration. Jen returned to economic development after the assignment, continuing to help shape Issaquah's business environment with innovation, professionalism, and care. During the COVID-19 pandemic, Jen played a pivotal role in supporting our local economy through one of the most challenging periods in recent memory. She worked tirelessly and creatively to help local businesses navigate constantly changing regulations and to access critical resources. Thanks to Jen's efforts, Issaquah's business community emerged more resilient and more connected. Jen worked on creating policy that was adopted by city council in 2023. This policy helped create and allocate funding for the Inclusive Housing Investment Pool, IHIP. This work is instrumental in guiding funding from IHIP into the preservation and creation of affordable housing units in Issaquah. In 2021, the city of Issaquah adopted a 0.1% sales tax increase for affordable housing and received state pass-through revenues for affordable housing investments. Recognizing the need for gap funding in affordable housing projects, this creation of IHIP funding allows the city to make direct investments for affordable housing projects in Issaquah. In 2024, Jen's role evolved once again to meet the city's growing needs. Her responsibilities expanded to include housing policy and strategy. Reflecting this broader scope, her title was updated to Economic and Housing Development Manager. This change highlights not only her adaptability, but also the city's confidence in her ability to lead in areas that are essential to our community's future. In the aftermath of the November windstorm, Jen and her team were immediately on the ground, checking in with businesses to assess damage, offer help, and to understand their needs during the significant local emergency. Her focus on the immediate safety of businesses and the longer-term recovery demonstrated her commitment and compassion for the Issaquah community. Over more than a decade of service, Jen has brought thoughtful leadership, strategic insight, and a collaborative spirit to every role she's held. Whether strengthening the city's affordable housing landscape or supporting the economic resilience of local businesses, Jen's dedication to our business community will continue to have a measurable impact. One other item I want to mention is, we all know during COVID, there was a significant uptick in retail theft. And Jen was my partner on Task Force and created the only task force that I know of locally to bring businesses together so that they could share their learned experiences and learn better about what the city can do. And I tell that story about Jen every time I go and talk about public safety and retail theft. So Jen, that was fabulous work. Please join me in recognizing Jen Davis Hayes for her invaluable contributions, her continued excellence, and her unwavering commitment to the city of Issaquah. She will be greatly missed, and we wish her well in her new opportunity. Jen, would you like to say anything?
I think the first thing I'm going to say is going to bring you to my next job interview. Thank you. So it's very bittersweet to be standing here and saying goodbye to the council, the mayors, and City Administrator Bakowitz and all the folks that I've worked with over the 11-plus years. I've worked for four cities so far, and this is the longest one. And I've had four different roles while I've been here, and it's allowed me the opportunity to grow and really work at a level this size of government to work across the whole city, which has been amazing. And to be able to work closely with the mayor on one thing and work with somebody just the other day in public works in the streets is just, that's, you know, that's who we are as city employees. We are here to serve at whatever level we need to do that. So I'll miss everybody and really appreciate the opportunities you've provided.
A little bit more. I also want to present Jen with this plaque that recognizes her years of service and also our significant appreciation for her. After this special event, I'm going to call for a five-minute recess to allow the council to come and speak with Jen before she leaves. And also, in case you want to have your picture with an Olympic athlete who's still here, we can do that before we start our regular business. But Jen, thank you so much.
Thank you.
So City Clerk, if it's all right, we'll take a five-minute recess. Sadly, I'm moving us back into our regular session. That was awfully fun. The next item on our agenda this evening is Audience Comments. And members of the public may address council at this time, in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance will be called on first. And if you're joining us virtually and would like to chat, please make comments by raising your virtual hand or sending the host a chat message. If you're in the room and you didn't sign up in advance, lost my place. I'll make sure to ask for any other speakers that would like to come up. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for general audience comments or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
Yes.
Great. So for those of you that are making comments, you're invited to address the council regarding matters that are directly related to Issaquah's programs, projects, services, or events. Comments related to political campaigns are not permitted. Please direct comments to the whole council and not individuals. And while this is not a question-and-answer session, the lower branches on a lot of the trees, so it increased the height of the flame would have to get to light these guys up. Since then, the branches have regrown, and now some of them are down about this high. So we have an ask, and I don't presume to speak for everybody on Idlewood, but I have talked to almost all the residents there about this, and it is a shared concern. So what we'd like to see first is for Public Works to come up and just mow the left-hand side of the median strip, the shoulder there, just to get the hay at least two or three feet away from where people flick cigarette butts out into it. So if we just do that on the loop, that's the first part. The second part would be a little bit more difficult, and that is to remove that stuff, the duff, get it out of there, because it's getting deeper and deeper and more tangled, and that is the main source. If that catches fire, then it doesn't matter how high the branches are above it, it's going to light them up. Excuse me. The problem that both the deputy chief and the chief told us is that it would be at least three, four, five minutes after they get notified that these trees are -- somebody's burning up there, before -- and that the spread of the embers would be before Eastside Fire and Rescue units could arrive on the scene. What we didn't talk, I didn't talk about, it didn't come up in those two conversations, was the deaths in California were almost all from people trying to get away, get in their cars and drive out, and they didn't make it. There are three ways off the north side of Squaw Mountain, and so...
Randy, just take a second to wrap up if you had additional thoughts.
Okay. There are three ways off. It's predictable that they will be jammed, and that will further increase the difficulty of the Eastside Fire Unit getting up there. I understand, and I'll leave it with this, I understand that the city is in the process right now of developing an evacuation plan, and that's great. So I'd encourage you to keep doing that and see if you can't just take -- go up there and take a look for yourselves and see if you agree with this situation. It's bad. Thank you.
Thank you, Randy.
City Clerk, who signed up next?
Corby Kessler.
Come on up, Corby.
Hi, everyone. I'm Corby Kessler. I'm the executive director of the Downtown Issaquah Association, and Tish is going to keep me sane here by five minutes flipping my slides. I just wanted to start out by talking about 2024, and that's because last time I was here, we talked about budgets, and a lot of the questions, you came to me saying you'd like to learn more about what D has been doing, so that's why we're here today. Next slide. So we know where we're going. We know what our mandate is. It's very clear, and it's not just about producing events, and I know a lot of people say you plan a lot of parties. Well, what we're really doing is building a thriving Old Town, a downtown that has been, in some cases during COVID, decimated by, like a lot of other businesses have, but because we have unusual, very unique problems in downtown, a level of expertise is important to understand what those particular issues are. Next slide, please. We are very proud to announce, it'll be announced tomorrow, that the Main Street America is announcing 300 affiliates of Main Street tomorrow. This will be a press release tomorrow. So Downtown Issaquah Association is designated as a 2025 affiliate, and this is so because they look at all the programs we're doing, they look at the results we're doing, and it's also based on Washington Main Street's recommendation that we become an affiliate across the United States, so we're very proud of that. One of the things that came into play here is we have a net promoter score, which when you subtract the people who are naysayers and you add the people who are really positive about the programs we do, we're 4.6, which is very high when you look at that kind of a formula. Next slide, please. We really follow four pillars, and that's the Washington Main Street approach. The pillar number one, probably the most important, is economic vitality. Sorry. These pictures here show you Fenders on Front, which is coming up Father's Day, so I hope to see you while they are. This is really a major boon to the downtown businesses. You'll see people standing outside in the mornings waiting to get into the restaurants, so we're really excited to bring it back. Last year, we had 7,500 visitors. We had almost 500 classic cars. I counted lawn chairs just because it shows that people are coming down to stay. They're not just coming to leave. They came, they brought their picnics or their buy-and-take-out, they sit down with their families. It's multi-generational. It's really a community event that comes together, and people, they come again and again. It's really heartwarming. Next slide, please. I want to talk about promotion, which is pillar number two. You'll see a lot of the advertising that we do goes to the Pacific Northwest, not just Issaquah. We want to make sure that people know that we exist. This focuses on, we're a great place to come and eat. So Issaquah Eats is something you'll see again and again. This one in particular was in 425 Magazine. The next slide, please. We also look at Front Street Smarts, and this is really showing that you can learn and you can have fun at the same time, and some examples are Bohm's. You can go and do a tour and learn how to make chocolate, or go to Experience Tea. I know, Zach, you've been there before, where you learn about what's going on with tea, and you do pairings and that kind of thing. Next slide, please. Promotion also brings hours of music to downtown, 270 hours of music, 153 bands, 390 creative places, and 464 performers. All of this is selling time for the artists who make their living here in Issaquah. We provide them that opportunity. Next slide, please. This is another one. Experience Issaquah. You'll see, again, it'll be consistent because we're branding it in a way that you come and you experience. We want you to stay all day. In fact, if you want to stay the night, we'd love to have you, and there's lots to do. Next slide, please. The third pillar is design, and I don't know if you've seen some of the things that we're doing to help support Village Theater, but we get all kinds of calls when we do this. This is grassroots marketing at its best, and our volunteers are doing all of this. But you'll see the pink shoes here are from Legally Blonde. You'll see the scarecrows on front, all the things that we do to make it seem like we are a beautiful, charming place to be, and we really actually are. So we're not just talking about it, we're demonstrating it. Next slide. This just shows you some more of where we're supporting Dial Line for Murder. We had a pop-up museum in Shell Station showing Telecom and how it began. Next slide, please. And flowers on front. Have you seen the 102 plants that have already sprung up? Our volunteers did this, 102 of these, and they eventually grow to be about 100 pounds. They really flourish. It's just gorgeous, and it's all by donation. Next slide, please. The power of partnerships. This, to me, is one of the more important slides, is that none of what we do can be done in isolation, and a lot of you here partner with us all the time, but these are some of the partners that everything we do, we make sure we reach out to them to say, how can we help you, or how can you be a part of something, making Issaquah come alive and make sure that downtown is...
It's okay, Corby. Wrap up.
Is the place we want to be. I think we're almost done. Next slide. So this is probably the most important slide I have, is 465 volunteers are our register who are there doing something with us every year, and this is the number of hours they put in. These are just from Thursday. Next slide, please. Finally, this is something that's near and dear to the council and to the city, and when you look in terms of isolation and people wanting a place to come and gather, we build community. So this will show you that we bring people downtown, the foot traffic, it's really an exciting thing that volunteers are doing, so there's only one staff member. This is all done by people from the goodness of their heart. And we'll be back in June to talk more about 2025 and some of the transformational strategies. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Corby. City Clerk, is there anyone else that has signed up?
No one else has signed up, and there are a few folks online, but I'm not seeing that any of them wish to speak at this point.
Yeah, I'm seeing a few hands up. Is that Wendy? Come on up. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you to all of the council and to the mayor, and to everyone for allowing the community to weigh in repeatedly over the course of the whole middle housing discussion, and I know, and your patience, because this is like my third time here. So regarding all the critical issues of density and affordability as it relates to Issaquah and particularly Old Town, and I just want to kind of wrap up a few thoughts on this before I know you're deciding tonight. So when we speak of wishing to retain the character of Issaquah, I think what we're speaking about is its unique and historic nature, as well as the culture and all the charm that it's maintained over the years and continues to hold now. I think it's, I find it very unique and becoming increasingly rare to find a downtown core within the major urban suburban interface that hasn't lost these special qualities that Issaquah still retains. And the drive that developed and maybe overdeveloped towns like Bellevue and Redmond has all but stripped them of their characteristics of the past and of their singularity. I think it's wholly unnecessary to go down this path, and I know we have some competing voices with master builders having sent in their proposals, the path they would have us take of buying properties, tearing down old, endearing, yet still very intact and usable homes, and lobbying to put up four, two, four, six, well, four, six or more, I think often quickly-built, often aesthetically and possibly quality-challenged units in Old Town lots, which I believe would likely enrich the builders but not the heart of Issaquah's self. It is also doubtful that these units would be genuinely affordable, but for the most part would be instead sold at market rate. We have already been over the issues quite a lot that this sea change to Old Town would present burdens on the environment and traffic, pressure on infrastructure and resources, loss of tree canopy and the birds and the pollinators that visit our trees and our gardens, and the very things that make Issaquah so unique as a confluence of local history, arts, and culture, natural beauty, and indeed charm. We must ask ourselves, is this the fate we wish to leave Old Town to, as in the fate of Redmond, Bellevue, and others, to go the way of so many overbuilt neighborhoods and towns which sadly seem to have no centers or no souls left? I believe we can find a better way. We can be Yimby. Yes, in my backyard, literally, by allowing for more ADU structures in Old Town with fewer complicated mandates and easier permitting processes, which are nevertheless in keeping with key city building codes such as height restrictions and permeability norms. It's also my belief, or hope perhaps, that greater care would be taken by homeowners with their ADUs in both form and function, prioritizing compatibility with their homes and properties over the goals of mass housing. These structures would allow for greater but gentle density downtown and allow the city to observe and assess how it is working out over time. We understand the need for more middle and affordable housing in Issaquah, as is true of our entire region. We are no different, and we are not advocating for no growth at all. There appears to be abundant space for large apartment and condo complexes west of downtown, near the Park and Ride Transportation Center and Gilman Boulevard, which would offer newcomers' convenience, access to everything downtown has to offer, and a great quality of life. We welcome new people. Let's just manage our growth thoughtfully, creatively, and sustainably while maximizing true affordability for low-income buyers and community and quality of life for all the inhabitants of our much-loved town. I think I forgot to mention, my name is Wendy Pickering. I live at 285 Second Avenue Northeast, just down the way, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Wendy. I see a lot of other folks in the room. Is there anyone else who would like to come up? Anne, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Anne Fletcher, and I am an Old Town resident of about 37 years. It's great to be here tonight. Thank you so much for this opportunity. The comments I have already made to the Planning Policy Commission and the Community Development and Environment Committee about middle housing still stand, and I won't go through and repeat all of those things. I know you have access to those, but I would like, should I wait a minute?
Yeah, take a break till the siren goes by.
They're hard at work.
They're hard at work.
I'm used to that because I live down here. And they still stand, and I do agree with the recommendations that both of those committees made, but I would like to add a couple of things. One is that Old Town has been and still is a great example of an eclectic neighborhood, almost, some people might say funky, and we have really appreciated that. It's a mix of historic and modern, single and multifamily and multi-generational. It's wonderful that way, and since we moved here, we raised our family here, we stayed on as retirees, and we hope to stay here a long time amongst a mix of ages and different kinds of people. But it has been duly zoned for a long time, and many residents have chosen to add units, additional detached and attached and to remodel, and this has allowed a natural, affordable, and sort of common sense way to grow this area. As we walk around the neighborhood, I see, take a break, I see all sorts of things in progress, and it's this kind of... and the very things that make Issaquah so unique as a confluence of local history, arts, and culture, natural beauty, and indeed charm. We must ask ourselves, is this the fate we wish to leave Old Town to, as in the fate of Redmond, Bellevue, and others? To go the way of so many overbuilt neighborhoods and towns which sadly seem to have no centers or no souls left? I believe we can find a better way. We can be Yimby. Yes, in my backyard, literally, by allowing for more ADU structures in Old Town with fewer complicated mandates and easier permitting processes, which are nevertheless in keeping with key city building codes such as height restrictions and permeability norms. It's also my belief, or hope perhaps, that greater care would be taken by homeowners with their ADUs in both form and function, prioritizing compatibility with their homes and properties over the goals of mass housing. These structures would allow for greater but gentle density downtown and allow the city to observe and assess how it is working out over time. We understand the need for more middle and affordable housing in Issaquah, as is true of our entire region. We are no different, and we are not advocating for no growth at all. There appears to be abundant space for large apartment and condo complexes west of downtown, near the Park and Ride Transportation Center and Gilman Boulevard, which would offer newcomers convenience, access to everything downtown has to offer, and a great quality of life. We welcome new people. Let's just manage our growth thoughtfully, creatively, and sustainably while maximizing true affordability for low-income buyers and, and community, and quality of life for all the inhabitants of our much-loved town. I think I forgot to mention, my name is Wendy Pickering. I live at 285 Second Avenue Northeast, just down the way, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Wendy. I see a lot of other folks in the room. Is there anyone else who would like to come up? Anne, come on up.
Good evening. My name is Anne Fletcher, and I am an Old Town resident of about 37 years. It's great to be here tonight. Thank you so much for this opportunity. The comments I have already made to the Planning Policy Commission and the Community Development and Environment Committee about middle housing still stand, and I won't go through and repeat all of those things. I know you have access to those, but I would like, should I wait a minute?
Yeah, take a break till the siren goes by.
They're hard at work. I'm used to that because I live down here. And they still stand, and I do agree with the recommendations that both of those committees made, but I would like to add a couple of things. One is that Old Town has been and still is a great example of an eclectic neighborhood, almost, some people might say funky, and we have really appreciated that. It's a mix of historic and modern, single and multifamily and, and multi-generational. It's wonderful that way. And since we moved here, we raised our family here, we stayed on as retirees, and we hope to stay here a long time amongst a mix of ages and different kinds of people. But it has been duplex zoned for a long time, and many residents have chosen to add units, additional detached and attached and to remodel, and this has allowed a natural, affordable, and sort of common sense way to grow this area. As we walk around the neighborhood, I see, take a break, I see all sorts of things in progress. And it's this kind of density increase, if it could continue at a reasonable pace, then the infrastructure that is needed to support this growth can be more easily dealt with. And the mix allows for more natural amenities, yards, gardens, trees, and all of that is much healthier and more beautiful, and people deserve that health and that beauty. So that is why two units per lot makes sense for Old Town, and an allowance for more units entices realtors, developers, and investors to go to the limit on tear-down and rebuild to get that ground coverage and height to make the desired profit. We regularly receive letters from outside investors wanting to buy our house, and that has increased since, in the last few months, since they know this discussion is going on. And so we, we, my, my final thought is, let's let those in this special neighborhood guide the density increase in a way that fits our city regulations and our community values, as well as provide that greater number and variety of middle housing that we're looking for in this lovely central location. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Is there anyone else in the room that would like to speak? Just raise your hand. I'm not seeing anyone else in the room. Tisha, is there anyone online that has indicated a desire to speak? Not seeing it? Okay, thanks. Well, I appreciate the, the several folks that stood up to talk about concerns I would drive on the median strip hazards, a report out on Downtown Issaquah Association, and comments on middle housing from several folks. Thanks for taking the time to come and talk to the council. As a reminder, at any point in time, you can write your comments to the city council at citycouncil@issquahwa.gov. The next item of business this evening is the consent calendar. I don't have any remarks myself on the consent calendar, but I'm wondering if any committee chairs would like to talk about any items that are on there. Councilmember Ray.
I don't know that this is something definitely related to the Mobility Infrastructure Committee, but I think tangentially, so I'm taking advantage of it. Super excited to see that we've got the intelligent transportation system, video analysis grant acceptance on here. As I think I've said at every opportunity, this is one of the most important things we can do moving forward, and having funding is a...
Key part of that.
Key part of that. Thank you for those words, I was looking for them. Thank you.
Councilmember Ray, thank you. Are there any other committee chairs that would like to speak to any of the items? Okay, let's see. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance, and if authorized, the items on the calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
They have.
Thank you. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Not seeing an indication. Is there a council motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar as distributed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries 7-0. We'll move to our regular business items, and the first one this evening is AB 8632, the 2000 sanitary sewer system plan. And I'd like to invite Utility Engineering Manager Matt Ellis to present the item. Welcome, Matt.
Good evening, council members. Again, Matt Ellis, Utility Engineering Manager. Tonight, we are presenting the sanitary sewer system plan for adoption. I'm joined here tonight with Sandaria Krishnamurthy from BHT, she's our consultant. The purpose of the, of the, tonight is to over, provide an overview of the plan and engagement thus far, provide a summary of the policies, a list of the CIPs, direction received, and then provide next steps. Again, for the agenda, provide a timeline to council and community engagement on this project, because it's been a lengthy one, a summary of the system plan, policy summary and capital improvement plan, direction received to date from both council as well as external agencies, next steps, planned implementation schedule, and recommendations. So this slide shows the stops we've made during, while we developed the sewer system plan. It has been a while since we've been back to council on this project. Since we engaged with council about a little over a year ago, we, we, let's see, went out for an inter-agency review and received quite a few comments from the Department of Ecology, King County Board of Health, and Sammamish Plateau Water and Sewer District. A few of their comments are identified on a future slide. We also went through the SEPA process and received no comment on the plan. To recap, our first set of conversations regarding the plan was discussed with the MNI Committee and the Environmental Board regarding onsite septic inspection and connection. From these touchpoints, we evaluated and revised the consideration on policy for septic system management. At this point, we developed a policy and CIP proposal to extend sewer into unsued neighborhoods that are in or adjacent to environmentally sensitive areas, where there's risk, septic failure could negatively impact the environment, and private extension is cost prohibitive for the community. Council and the community were largely supportive of this initiative. The biggest discussion points or hurdles were on septic violations and inspection requirements. After evaluation, these elements are best covered as a code revision, not as a policy statement. It will be coming back to council as a code amendment to IMC Title 13 and 16 in a subsequent meeting later this year. In November 23, we went back to MNI to discuss the development of the rest of the sewer system plan. We ran through the hydraulic model, identified the proposed capital improvement plan, and discussed the policy statements that did not center on septic system management. This meeting discussed capacity and management of the overall system. The community agreed with the proposed policy statements, which included increasing capacity when sections of the sewer system are experiencing surcharging within sewer manholes, and requiring developers to contribute costs if a proposed development will create capacity concerns within a section of sewer. Regarding a policy centered around fats, oils, and grease, or fog management, the committee elected not to require a one-year retroactive clause for installing a grease interceptor for commercial establishments, and instead recommended a three-year window to comply, which will be established by code. This allows existing commercial establishments time to save up for and the purchase and permitting of the corrected-sized grease interceptor. A few commercial establishments were concerned with this policy. For public outreach, we did outreach early in this process. We received positive support from the community in the policies that we presented to council and the environmental board. We have not changed the primary policy points, and the public have been largely supportive of the initiatives we've proposed. We still have a phase in the implementation piece in implementing the red line code. This phase will be the most impactful to residents, as it is, it will dictate the regulations. The draft code has gone through SEPA process with the sewer system plan, including options for public engagement. We received no comments. We're presently going through the final attorney concurrence to fine-tune the wording of these code revisions, and we'll, we plan to bring this comment, this component to council before the end of the year. So here is the primary components of the sewer system plan. Includes the service area characteristics within the city, the population and growth projections, regulations and policy, existing facility evaluation, sewer flow characteristics, conveyance system analysis, wastewater reclamation and reuse evaluation, operations and maintenance evaluation of our maintenance division, capital improvement program, and financial program. And as a summary, we're going to go through the, the goals of the sewer system plan to give a bit of a recap. The goals are similar to existing goals set in the previous 2002 sewer system plan, which is the last adopted plan, and also corresponding comprehensive plans that have been adopted since then. You may have noticed that we have repeated these first four goals in the first four policy statements. We just recently realized this, and we'll clean that up in a few minor grammatical errors with adoption and publication of the final plan. So Goal 1 is to provide safe, reliable, and timely sewer service to its customers at a fair and reasonable price. Goal 2 is to provide reliable levels of service and ensure adequate capacity within the sewer system by upgrading the system to protect the natural environment as deemed necessary. Goal 3 is to ensure the sewer system infrastructure expansion provides an adequate level of public service to support new development consistent with the city's policies, criteria, and standards. And Goal 4 is to develop feasible and cost-effective collection system alternatives and improvement recommendations to effectively operate the sewer system to serve existing and future city customer needs. Goal 5 is to replace or reline all asbestos pipes within the next 20 years, and we're actually completed that project already. Protect the health and safety of the city's Issaquah residents, businesses, and visitors. Protect the environment and the quality of the city's lakes, streams, and groundwater, and be responsible water stewards for future generations. As I mentioned, we just realized that the policy statements are the same for the first four goals, so I won't be repeating these, but we will be fixing that. So Policy 5 is to extend sewers into unsued neighborhoods located within, within or adjacent to environmentally sensitive areas. And to expand upon that, Tier 1, as we had discussed a long time ago, would be the 100-year floodplain, shoreline buffer boundary, and commercial industrial properties, and our goal is to extend sewers or get people on sewer within 20 years. Tier 2 is the stream buffers, wetland boundaries, and documented areas with high groundwater, and the goal would be to extend within 30 years in that category. Then Category 3 would be the Critical Aquafer Recharge Area, or CARA, in the 1- to 10-year wellhead capture zone, and that goal would be 40 years. Policy 6 is to upsize or remediate the adjacent sewer system when the maximum water surface within the conveyance system generated during a 25-year recurrence interval designed storm is predicted to become equal or greater than the surcharge criteria, which is a fancy way of saying, when sewer backs up into a manhole, we fix it. So shallow pipes, we'd have more strict requirements because there's more of a risk, especially during a storm event. In deeper sections of pipe, we'd have less strict requirements because we can allow the water to rise within the manhole because it wouldn't impact infrastructure. Policy 7, developers shall analyze the impacts of the development on the existing sewer system. If the city makes a determination that the developments' impacts of the existing sewer system require upgrades, the upgrades shall be made at cost to the developer, so they pay their contribution. And Policy 8 is to ensure businesses contributing fats, oil, and grease, or fog to the city's sewer system have appropriate grease interceptors installed or best management practices in As we did the analysis, we looked at all the projects and the growth within the city. We found just a few spots that had capacity concerns. One of those is already on our capital improvement plan, which is the SW 18 South Newport and Wildwood Sewer remediation. Our design is in '26, and construction is in '27. This is a large project estimated at 1.2 million to upsize the sewer line to reduce the surcharging in the system. Sewer is currently observed during major storm events close to the rim of the manhole. This is a, this causes, the, this is a conservative measure, upsizing the system, but as we investigate further, we will be looking to see if we can find the reason for the surcharging. Oftentimes, there's a storm connection to the sewer that we can fix. If this issue can be addressed, we can fix this issue economically and reduce the volume of water entering the sewer and alleviating the need to upsize the pipe. This would significantly cut costs, help the environment, but for the planning purposes, we want to plan for the worst-case scenario where we cannot find an upstream issue and then, and budget for that. The other two projects are development-driven, so as the upstream sections of, of the city grow and expand, we would need to upsize those pipes. So these are 30-year timelines when these sections of, these areas grow. So one of those is the Wild, is on Wildwood between Gibson and Hepler Lane, and the other is up in the Highlands on Fifth Place between Ellis Drive and Discovery Drive. We also have the sewer extension program. Currently, we're in the design for the Sycamore neighborhood. The next one would be along Tibbetts Creek and between Tibbetts and SR 900, and that would coincide with a, a street project, TR 22. So we would be doing the design in 2029 and construction in 2031. All right. Direction to date. I touched on this previously, but as a summary of what we heard from committees to date, to refresh your memory from a long time ago. Policy number 5 extends sewer into unsued neighborhoods. Mobility and Infrastructure agreed to support sewer extensions into unsued neighborhoods, where sewer extensions were cost prohibitive and, and septic systems pose a concern to environmentally sensitive areas. For Policy 6, maintaining sewer system capacity, the MNI agreed with the I&amp;I capacity impact threshold. And for developer capacity impacts, MNI agreed with the developer contributions based on amount of flow contributing to surcharging. For the fats, oils, and grease management policy, MNI elected not to require a one-year retroactive clause for installing grease interceptors. The timeline for compliance will be established in code, and that will come later, but we are proposing three years for that. As I mentioned, we went to inter-agencies after we touched base with council last. Below is a short summary of comments from Ecology. And this is not an exhaustive list, but I captured the items that were not simple corrections as we evaluated external agency comments. Some were grammatical, some were updating maps, how we're showing our system, but these are more of the substantial ones. So how does the state legislature's new measure on multi-housing affect zoning and population projections? Which I think will be the next topic. But growth projections and capacity were evaluated with assumptions of middle housing development and current growth forecasting. So our system is fine. Our system model can be revised in the future, as the policy is finalized for middle housing, though. But from current projections, we're fine. How will the city ensure private grinder pumps are properly operated and maintained? Grinder pumps will be privately owned. There will be an inspection program created to ensure grinder pumps are functioning correctly. Additionally, the city will require only one type of lift station moving forward, and will keep a few spare parts on hand in the event a homeowner needs a repair and a service representative cannot, cannot make a fix in a timely manner. And this is, this is in line with the current Ecology policy. And then provide detail on how sewer overflows will be reported to Ecology. Similar to other spills, sewer overflows will be reported through the ERT system within 24 hours of a spill. Here is again a shortened version of comments from Sammamish Plateau Water and Sewer District. Will proposed policy for sewer extensions adjacent to environmentally sensitive areas be applicable only to the city's service area or extend to city limits and impact that portion served by Sammamish Plateau Water District? And again, to remind her, the city, Issaquah serves about 2/3 of the city, but Sammamish Plateau serves the northeast quadrant. The city is evaluating extensions only within our service area. Staff will coordinate on planning and strategies that border or extend into the Sammamish Plateau service area. District staff would like to better understand how information regarding septic system functioning and failures is obtained by the city. An inspection program will be created. It will be the responsibility of the property owner to report to the city, but the city will maintain an inventory and provide reminders of when inspection is due. This is contrary to current practice, where only septic systems adjacent to city sewer are required to provide inspection records. So we'll be requiring it for all septic systems within the city, including Sammamish Plateau The district has an agreement to require property owners to extend to sewer if sewer is available within five years. What is the city's requirement? The city is requiring connection within three years, consistent with the city code and DOH requirements for inspections. So right now, we require an inspection to occur every three years, and that would be consistent when, when an extension would be required. Will single-family projects on existing lots located outside of environmentally sensitive areas but within 200 feet of sewer be required to connect to sewer? Yes. This will be clarified in code as 200 feet from a building served. This is more stringent than what is currently proposed in code, but less stringent than the King County Board of Health, which is requiring... the King County Board of Health, which is requiring 200 feet from the property. This favors large topographically constrained properties that may have sewer near the property boundary, but it's a logistical challenge to get sewer to a building that might be further than 200 feet from where the pipe currently resides. We also heard from King County Utilities Review Committee. Please include additional information to address odor and corrosion concerns, and then a new section was developed to address that in Chapter Four. There is an area within the urban growth boundary but outside the city limits currently not served by a wastewater purveyor. Does the city intend to provide sewer service to this area if annexed? The area in question is up on Squawk Mountain, above the Cougar Mountain Zoo. I'm sorry, that's Cougar Mountain. I apologize. Issaquah is the downstream sewer provider, and all properties are currently on septic. But IMC 1388010 prohibits extensions outside city limits. Sewer availability would only occur if annexation occurs. Mainly, the concern stems from the risk that city has no control over zoning or growth outside of the city and has less control over proposed connections. So currently, we are not proposing unless that area would be annexed. So next steps. Our next steps is to revise those minor edits and then send the plan to ecology in King County for formal adoption. We also will be back here before the end of the year with code revisions relating to Title 13, On-Site Septic Inspection Requirements. The new code will add definitions relating to onsite septic system maintenance to better define the terms of failure, non-conforming systems, and repair. We will revise connection requirements to sewer and when septic systems are not allowed, and elaborate on septic inspection criteria. Under Title 16, we'll be revising our grease trap requirements. The new code will expand food service establishment definitions, increase requirements for commercial grease trap installation, include training requirements for grease trap maintenance, and add record-keeping and compliance requirements for grease trap interceptors. So our recommendation is to adopt Resolution Number 2025-Adopting the Sanitary Sewer System Plan. Questions?
Thank you, Matt. We all know a lot more about sanitary sewers than we did 20 minutes ago. Before we do questions, I just want to see Chairman Ray. Did you have any committee comments you wanted to add to that?
I might be Chairman Emeritus, I think.
Oh, Chairman Emeritus? Who is the MNI Chair? Oh, how about Councilmember Joe? Do you have anything you'd like to add before we go to questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I yield the floor to the Chairman Emeritus. He was the one that was present during those meetings.
I thought that was going to happen. Okay, Chairman Emeritus.
Yeah. Back in February of 2023, the Mobility and Infrastructure Committee spent a lot of time with Public Works reviewing the proposed changes to the sanitary sewer, and a lot of it revolved around the extension of the sewer and requiring some changes in the way septic systems were managed. There was, in my notes, it's all caps, a lot of comments. You wouldn't think it, but we packed chambers for this meeting, and it was really quite an emotionally charged issue. Nothing but kudos to Public Works and the administration for really skillfully planning how to respond to the questions and really diffuse the passions that were associated with the sewer extensions and really brought down the temperature. I think this plan reflects the conversations we had with the community. It reflects the commitments we made to the community at those meetings about how we were going to partner with existing owners, homeowners who had septic systems to move them forward. And I think we also had a long fats, oils, and grease, fog discussion, too, and that's why we asked for the change of giving a little bit of time to particularly business owners that were going to have some costs. And this was also just post-pandemic, and everybody was still a little bit on their heels, and we wanted to provide some flexibility to particularly some of our restaurants to get them back on their feet before implementing those changes. So I think that the plan really does reflect a lot of good discussions, and it was a long time ago, but it was quite memorable.
Thank you, Chair Emeritus. Any questions from council on this before we move to a motion? Council President?
Thank you. I'm wondering, you know, when we talk about areas that will be provided with sewer capacity in the future but are currently on septic, what are the, are there any requirements of connection and use? And what are kind of the, what does that look like for, say, a future resident if that was to be provided?
That's a good question. So that will be more identified in code, but what it will do is basically, we're not going to require a connection. What we're going to do is provide the opportunity for connection. However, we want to make sure people are inspecting and maintaining their system. If a system is shown to be not functioning anymore, then they are obligated to connect because sewer would be within 200 feet of their property.
Any other questions? Okay, not seeing any. Chair Emeritus, would you like to make a motion?
Thanks. I move to approve Resolution Number 2025-
Dash 11.
-adopting the Sanitary Sewer System Plan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Deputy Council President?
The council has heard this before, but for the people in the audience, in January joined the King County, Seattle King County Board of Health, and the very first thing we talked about was septic and sewer systems. And because I was new, I also received a briefing from King County Public Health. And during that briefing, they mentioned that Issaquah is a quote-unquote shining light in the area of septic and sewer planning. And so, and I told Director Moon, or manager, or, sorry, I told Emily Moon the same thing, that our reputation in this greater field is well-established and very admired. And there is a real concern on the part of the Port of Health and King County Public Health about the state of our septic systems and sewer systems in King County, and with real concern for the environmental impacts. But Issaquah is well, well, well ahead of the pack, and so it really speaks well to our staff and the planning that's been done by our department. So I just want to be sure that people understand that, and we have a plan, and it's a very clear, well-thought-out plan. And I'm sorry that it took so long to get back all of the reviews, but here we are. And so I will be supporting the motion. Thanks.
Thank you for sharing that, Deputy Council President. Any other comments? Is that Councilmember Joe?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Sewer System Plan update was passed in 2002, and there was a guy named Fred Butler, who was president at the time, Councilmember named Bill Conley, Councilmember Joe Forkner, David Kapler, who's sitting in the audience tonight, Nancy Davidson, who made many comments on the missing middle legislation before you, and Hank Thomas, as well as myself. So this is the second time I've had a crack at this plan. And let me just say that I am so proud of Issaquah because my kids can go and swim in the creek and not be in danger of being exposed to toxins because we've done a good job getting rid of the septic fields and the septic systems when they did fail before they would pollute the river, pollute the stream, and pollute our environment in a way that was irreversible. So the plan in 2002 made some progress. I'm pleased that the plan today in 2025 is making that next step to continue our environmental protections for the city, and I am fully supportive of it, in support of it this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council members? Council President?
Thank you. I won't repeat what everybody has said about our transition from septic to sewer and how good of a job we've done on that, but I do want to highlight the fats, oils, and grease, fog, and the fact that we are addressing this. And I'm sure we will work with our local businesses to make sure that they have the information needed to help them come up to requirements for this. But I do appreciate having an implementation window that allows for time to make that contact rather than to make a requirement of reverse requirement of the, anybody who's made an adjustment in the last year, because I think that would have been much more difficult to explain to businesses and have them be comfortable with the idea of making any of these changes. So I just appreciate the flexibility in that, and I think it will allow us to work with our businesses in a way that will bring them up to what the requirements are without any of the animosity. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember Jiang?
Yeah, I won't repeat what others have said. I agree with all of it. I also wanted to just give a shout out to, you know, I really appreciate the planning for future growth that's in here. It's heartening to see, you know, even with all the planned growth we have through 2044, it's not planned, it's not projected to overload the system, which is definitely something that, you know, folks have expressed concern with. So I hope that that's kind of a lens that we take to all of our other infrastructure planning moving forward, especially as we, you know, figure out what growth is going to look like in Issaquah as we prepare for Light Rail and everything else coming down the line in the next few decades.
Fantastic. Any other comments? Not seeing any. The motion before council is to adopt Resolution Number 2025-11, Adopting the Sanitary Sewer System Plan. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously, seven and no. Thank you very much, Matt. The next two items, AB 8972 and AB 9021, will be presented jointly. AB 8972 is middle housing amendments to Title 18 Land Use Code, and AB 9021 is street standards conforming amendments. And the request before the council this evening is to adopt the ordinances. So welcome, Assistant Planner Valerie Porter. Thanks for all your work on this, and we look forward to your presentation.
Just getting set up still. Give us a minute. Thank you for your patience. Good evening. My name is Valerie Porter. I'm Associate Planner with the Community Planning Development Department, and I'm here to talk to you about the middle housing regulations. So just to start, I have a quick clarification. The administration is seeking approval not for one ordinance but for four. So there are three related, three ordinances related to AB 8792 and one associated with AB 9021, and all of these are related to the middle housing regulations. So just a little background, Washington is projected to need more than 1 million homes by 2044 to keep up with the anticipated population growth. To promote more housing, in 2023, House Bill 1110 was passed, which was later amended by House Bill 2321, to increase middle housing in areas traditionally dedicated to single-family detached housing. The bill established lot density requirements based on a city's population, and so for Issaquah, that means the city must allow two dwelling units on one lot, four dwelling units on one lot if that lot is within a quarter-mile walking distance of a major transit stop, or one unit is set aside for an affordable housing. Also, the regulations for middle housing may be more, may not be more restricted than those for a detached single-family home. This project is also addressing House Bill 1337, which discusses accessory dwelling units. This bill requires Issaquah to allow two dwelling units on one lot with a detached single-family home. It also limits regulations around constructing ADUs, and both bills are required to, require the city to update their regulations by June 2025. So just a quick recap, what is middle housing? Middle housing is a term that refers to housing that are on the building spectrum, that sits between a detached single-family home and a large-scale apartment building. Middle housing is defined as buildings that are compatible in scale, form, character with single-family homes. They contain two or more units per structure that may be attached, stacked, or clustered homes. Middle housing types may include a duplex, triplex, all the way up to six-plexes, as well as townhomes, courtyard, and cottage housing. So this project began in February of 2024, and after understanding the regulation and conducting a feasibility study, the project moved into this next phase of public engagement, which included educating the community about the state regulations and also trying to obtain feedback. So in July of 2024, the middle housing webpage went live, and that's where we had a lot of information about the regulations. We had the documents stored there, as well as any events that were upcoming. In August, we held a middle housing workshop, and in September, we also had an online survey where we received approximately 280 participants. Staff also conducted Q&amp;A sessions and then also had a neighborhood tour with the Planning Policy Commission and council members. And this was, and they were both open to the public. Since October of 2024, the administration has been posing questions to the Planning Policy Commission to help guide the proposed amendments. So these next two slides are going to summarize the policy questions that were posed to PPC and their recommendations. House Bill 1110 requires middle housing projects to be streamlined and only be reviewed administratively. The administrative believed in order to comply with this requirement and not impact single-family development too much, a definition and a limit of housing units needed to be established for middle housing projects. PPC agreed, and a definition, PPC agreed that a definition was needed, so we created one, and they felt that that threshold for the unit limit should be set at four or less. They thought that anything more than that would be very impactful, would require noticing of the neighbors, and then also a review by the Development Commission. A question was also posted then regarding what standards the middle housing should be exempt from. House Bill 1110 also states that middle housing regulations cannot be more restricted than those required for a detached single-family home. The required detached single-family homes and middle housing basically needed to be treated the same, so we needed to understand, should the city exempt middle housing from requiring a land use permit and frontage improvements like a detached single-family home? PPC decided middle housing projects would be exempt and only be required to obtain a building permit, and they should also be exempt from constructing frontage improvements if constructed on existing lot. And so this is mainly so that single-family homes wouldn't be impacted and require more permitting than they do today. Based on PPC's decision, the required, this required street standards to be amended, which is what's prompting this change, which is addressed in 9021, AB 9021. The middle housing regulations do not consider a detached single-family home or an accessory dwelling unit to be considered middle housing building types, but the bill does give cities options to determine how an ADU should be treated, should it be outright allowed and used to achieve lot density. This question was related to lot density was posed to PPC, and they suggested that ADUs should be allowed on lots with middle housing, but they should be counted as a unit. And so basically, what this means is if there is a lot that can have four units on one lot, someone can build a duplex and two ADUs. They cannot build a fourplex in two ADUs. That would be considered six units. There was also, we also talked about critical areas. With House Bill 1110, the city had the option to exempt lots encumbered by critical areas from building middle housing, and this question was mainly focused around coal mine hazard areas or seismic hazard areas. And PPC decided that the critical area code should be applied to middle housing as it is today if the lot can provide appropriate mitigation measures. There was also a question related to impact fees. The administration, today, the ADUs are exempt from paying impact fees. With these new regulations, staff wanted to understand if impact fees should continue to be waived or if 50% of the impact fees should be collected with ADUs. PPC recommended that the fee be continued to be waived, and they felt that this would encourage- they felt that this would encourage the creation of more ADUs.
During, hang on Valerie.
Yeah.
Councilmember Hall?
Can I ask a, a quick question? You're doing great. Sorry. Can I ask just a quick question to highlight something with the rest of the council, because there's something PPC and, and the committee got to kind of dive into a little bit, but the percentage of single-family lots that are encumbered by some sort of critical area. Do you remember that figure?
It's close to 40%.
Yeah, it's quite a lot. So anyways, just wanted to emphasize that.
Thank you. So during one of the Planning Development and Environment Committee meetings, there was discussion on whether lot density should be four units per lot versus the required two units per lot. And there was a request to, there was a request for more information around this topic, and then there was also another request to then present this information to the Planning Policy Commission and have them weigh on, weigh in on this. PPC discussed this topic, and they decided to keep the lot density at two units per lot, as this allowed the city to comply with the state regulations, allow for more density, and then evaluate the progress, and then see if additional changes need to be made at a later date. PPC also, PDE also wanted PPC to discuss the size requirements for accessory dwelling units. Many other requirements in the bill really blur the lines between what is considered a primary, primary home versus an accessory dwelling unit. And so PPC decided to keep the 1,000-square-foot requirement in place because they felt that this was adequate space for an accessory dwelling unit, and 1,000 square feet is equivalent to a two-bedroom apartment. As the project progressed, policy questions related to design were posed to PPC. The administration wanted to understand if the requirements of having a walkway separate from the driveway should remain. PPC decided that this requirement should be removed and as not to requiring it would allow a little bit more design flexibility for the developer, especially when trying to design with the impervious surface requirements. The intent of House Bill 1110 is to allow more housing options in single-family zones. Since new building types are being introduced to single-family zones, the administration suggested two requirements from the Old Town Design Standards be applied citywide. These requirements were selected because Old Town is the only single-family neighborhood that allows multi-unit structures along with single-family homes. PPC agreed that having the design standards in place was needed, and the two requirements were appropriate. So a few years ago, the city added definitions for cottage and courtyard housing to the land use code, but they didn't adopt any design standards. And so as a part of this project, design standards were developed, and it also included divining open space for these two housing types. And so the proposed amendments require at least 20% of the lot be set aside for open space, which the, which PPC agreed with the proposal. Staff took the feedback from PPC and PDE and drafted amendments. The proposed amendments revised lot density requirements to allow two units on one lot if the lot is constructing a middle housing building type, four units on one lot if the lot is within a quarter-mile walking distance of a major transit stop, or one unit will be set aside for affordable, as an affordable unit, and ADUs will count as a unit when constructing middle housing. As a quick update, those, for those tracking the project and-
Valerie, Deputy Council President has a question.
Yes.
Thanks, Valerie. So it's my understanding that there was some confusion at one point about what a major, what constituted a major transit stop. And so, and I, my understanding is that the legislature clarified that. Could you explain, and does this bus stop out here serve as a major tran- major transit stop? So I think those are my questions. Thanks.
Yes. So the Department of Commerce made an interpretation that all routes serviced by sound transit would be considered a major transit stop. And so for us, that meant sound transit route 554 and 556. And also, that impacted several neighborhoods. So, and neighborhoods like Old Town would be required, or we would have to require them to allow four units on one lot regardless of lot size. In addition, they wouldn't have to provide parking. This was very impactful. So staff worked with state representatives to revise a definition, which is reflected in House Bill 1441, which was recently passed. And so as it relates to middle housing, we do not have a major transit stop currently. Yeah, no worries. So state legislation requires the city to allow six middle housing building types in all residential zones, residential zones to achieve lot density. And so the table of permitted uses in the land use code was revised to allow a duplex, triplex, fourplex, townhomes, cottage homes, and stacked flats in all single-family zones. The term middle housing has been added to the code and reflects the PPC's recommendation of four units or less, and the permitting process for middle housing building type was also revised so that they are exempt from obtaining a land use permit. The proposed amendments show design standards for single-family and middle housing structures to ensure that the building types fit seamlessly within the existing neighborhoods. The parking code was revised to align with state legislation, and PPC had a recommendation of increasing the mac- maximum parking requirement for detached, single-family homes. And this is for those scenarios where a lot has a garage that can accommodate house, or two parking stalls and a large driveway that they could also have two parking stalls. Today, the maximum parking requirement is two, so someone wouldn't be able to use their driveway, so they upped up that parking requirement. There's also design standards for, and open space requirements were added for cottage and courtyard housing, like I previously mentioned. And to ensure compliance with House Bill 1337, the land use code was revised to allow two ADUs on one lot if constructed with a detached, single-family home in multiple configurations. So that could be detached, attached, or internal. We removed all language requiring the property owner to reside on site, as the bill states that this can no longer be a requirement for approval. And then prior to the big code update that we did in 2023, there was code language that allowed someone to basically create an internal ADU if the size of that basement or their attic was over 1,000 square feet, just as long as they don't do any external additions. And so this is really just allowing someone to quickly create an ADU instead of adding a wall or something just to create, to meet that minimum 1,000-square-foot requirement. Or, excuse me, the maximum 1,000-square-foot requirement. The code also has been updated to remove processes that are just no longer used, specifically the elimination of an approved ADU. The code required, what are now unnecessary steps, so they would have to send a letter to the planning department, they would have to request an inspection. With the bill, these things are just no longer needed. So we took them out of the land use code. So PPC held a public hearing on March 27, and unanimously approved the proposed amendments.
Valerie, hang on one sec. Councilmember Martz has a question.
Thanks. Can you go back? Did I, I guess it's not there. Did I miss when you, definition of affordable is up to 120% of AMI?
For middle housing, definite, for, there's two definitions. So for ownership, it's at 80% AMI, and then for rental, it's 60 AMI.
It's, I'm sorry?
60. Six zero.
60. Okay. So in this whole thing of talking about potentially four units on a lot, if there's affordable, affordable would be 80% at, for ownership, 60% for rental.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So PPC approved the proposed amendments, but they did have one motion to revise a requirement in the single-family and middle housing design guidelines, and this change is intended to ensure that primary access is gained from the street first. And if there isn't a street available, then you can gain access from an alley or an other transportation facility. And at this time, I'll take any additional questions.
Great. Valerie, thank you. Councilmember Hall, this is your committee, I believe. Did you want to add any comments before we go to questions?
Yeah, I do, if that's okay. I just want to start by, like, assuring the council that PDE was, like, very deliberate on this issue. This presentation represents many, many touches with the public, with PPC, with PDE, so we really took our time on this. I think the staff summary captures our conversation very well. I mean, you were amazing throughout the whole process. You walked us through each, because it's very complicated, especially how the two interact with each other. So walking us through all the policy questions one after one. So, I mean, just at a high level, we largely, like was said, we largely followed state requirements here. There were a few things that, as a committee, we did highlight for staff, and there was captured in the memo, to kind of monitor and report back to us in the future if we need to consider future policy changes around lot density and the affordable unit, right? There was a financial analysis that was done to show that that fourth affordable unit does pencil out on paper. So the question long-term is, does that pencil out in reality, right? The ADU size, this represents no change from 1,000 square feet, but we did have some conversation about whether that should go up to 1, 1250, something like that, right?
Yeah, 1250.
So in the future, do, do we want to consider that again or not? And that was largely driven by use cases. As people coming in, we weren't getting a lot of demand for people wanting to build 1,000, except for maybe a couple people that we heard come speak to us at council. So monitoring how that evolves in the future. Impact fees, which you already mentioned, which are exempted for, um, single-family homes, so we had to exempt them here, but monitoring the, um, the impact that that might have, and then frontage improvements, right? That's also exempted for, exempted from single-family homes, but also as we consider some of these larger, broader conversations around street standards, is there an opportunity in the future to have conversation about potentially matching existing frontage improvements, matching existing mobility type and those kinds of things, ease of path? So anyways, yeah, but beyond that, again, I can't thank you enough. Valerie Porter was amazing in this. I mean, I want to thank Kristen Leeson and Director Dolly Wall and everyone else who was involved in this as well, but really, you did an outstanding job with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well said. Questions? We had a few questions during the presentation. Are there more? Councilmember Joe?
Thank you. Valerie, I echo the compliments you received from Councilmember Hall. I also, I also had the opportunity to listen to the October 22 presentation that you and Stephen Padula did. It was an excellent rendition of the restrictions, et cetera, that were involved with this particular legislation. You did some work to kind of hone down the number of possible buildable lots for middle housing during this analysis, and ultimately, ultimately, it came down that there were a total of 4,113 parcels that are buildable areas for middle housing potentially. But then there's always that footnote that's there, which indicates one of the limitations could be the CCNRs that are out there. And those are conditions, covenants, and restrictions for homeowner associations or, or planned developments that might have gone up a time during our, our development. Do we have any idea or an estimate of how much of that additional, of that 4,000-plus available sites gets siphoned off by CCRs?
No, we do not have that information. It's not something that we track. We've tried very hard to kind of keep a list of all the HOAs in the city, but we just don't have that information. But we do have a provision in the, in the proposed regulations that states that you have to provide approval from your HOA, just to ensure that we're not allowing something that would be in conflict with approved CCNRs.
That sounds like a pretty sound precaution. Thank you. The other question I had is, you touched on the kind of situation where you have a duplex built, and then you indicated that, I think you said there were, there was an opportunity to build one ADU with each of the duplex units. Is that what you said?
I think it was related to lot density. I was trying to provide an example and not confuse you guys. So for, so with lots, zoning requirements establish how many units you can have on a lot. So if a lot is allowed to have four, you can have two duplexes, a triplex, an ADU. You can do any mix of the middle housing building types to achieve lot density. But if today you're only allowed one unit on your lot, you can get bumped up to two if you build a duplex. It has to be a middle housing building type, because alone, a detached, single-family home is not considered a, a middle housing building.
Okay. Let's say the density was six, just hypothetically. If I built a duplex, could I later add an attached ADU and then a detached ADU on that property?
Yes, just as long as you do not exceed six units, but there would probably be a limit on your accessory dwelling units, just because House Bill 1337-1110 don't mix very well. But we would just consider these units, but then the issue of impact fees comes into play. And so we'd probably say that you're only limited to two ADUs.
All right. And wouldn't it be true that doing that type of density on a piece of property would be made quite difficult with the amount of setbacks you have, the potential that you couldn't get too close to the alley and back, and the height restrictions that might be on that piece of property?
Yes. If someone wanted to build more than two or more than two units on a lot, it would be extremely challenging due to the zoning regulations would state how your setbacks, your lot coverage, as well as your building height. But with House Bill 1337, there are some provisions that we cannot require on an ADU, so they do not have to meet the rear setbacks if the lot isn't plowed, I believe.
Okay, thank you. And just one last question. Thank you to my colleagues for indulging my long set of questions that I didn't write down, but, and making up on the go. H, House Bill, House Bill 1096, which was, which was just passed this session, was a lot-splitting bill. And I don't want to put you on the spot right now, but if you can't answer it, I would like to know, or the council's edification, what impact that lot-splitting bill might have on what we're going to pass today and other future actions that we might take.
I'm not completely familiar with the lot-splitting bill, but I am familiar with the term. And so how, um, House Bill 1110 was written, it was actually meant to have, it was meant for lot-splitting to have already been approved. And so we do have language currently in the proposed amendments to address lot-splitting. So we do not have to revise the, the, the code to address it.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Other questions? Okay. I'd be looking for a motion then. She's probably, yeah, Council President has all the words.
Yeah, it's, it's four different ordinances. So I move to adopt the following ordinances. Ordinance number-
3091.
Amending Title 18, the Issaquah Municipal Code to incorporate a variety of changes to comply with HB 1110 as amended in HB 2321.
Council President, I did not pay attention to the clerk's note, which is that she would like to make some minor modifications before you proceed. Did you want to do that now?
Sure. Sorry for the interruption. This is Tisha Geezer, City Clerk. I just wanted to make a quick comment, that the ordinances we've noticed in the packet are indicating an earlier effective date than we are technically allowed to implement. And so with your motion, Council President, I'd be recommending that we'll be editing the ordinances to indicate the minimum effective date, which would be May 27. And so we will assume that, in making your motion, we'll assume that corrected effective date. Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you, City Clerk. Okay. Um, as amended, I'm going to start over. Move to, adopt the following ordinances. Ordinance number 3091, amending the Title 18, Title 18, the Issaquah Municipal Code to incorporate a variety of changes to comply with HB 1110 as amended in HB 2321 regarding middle housing. And ordinance number-
3092.
Amending Title 18, the Issaquah Municipal Code to incorporate changes to comply with House Bill 1337 regarding accessory dwelling units. And ordinance number-
3093.
Amending Title 18, the Issaquah Municipal Code, Chapter 18.604 Parking, to comply with the middle housing requirements in House Bill 1110 and House Bill 1337. And ordinance number-
3094.
Amending the street standards adopted by Ordinance 3029 to conform with the city's middle housing regulations regarding street frontage improvements.
In, in accordance with an implementation date as stated by the city clerk?
In accordance with an implementation date as stated by the city clerk.
Councilmember Hall?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. That was a lot of words. You've already had some chance to ask questions. Is there any discussion at this point? Council President?
Thank you. So- So, as Chair Hall mentioned, this has gone through a long process. We have been very well served by staff as we have come through this and discussed the things that would allow this legislation to reflect Issaquah. This is a state requirement, but that doesn't, you know, eliminate our ability to implement this in a way that addresses our community needs and concerns. So, I want to note that this allows for gentle density across many neighborhoods in Issaquah. I put a note, is this perfect? No. And the idea of HOAs with these CCNRs being able to limit the ability to add additional housing units in their particular area means that this type of legislation is going to unduly impact neighborhoods and put pressure on neighborhoods without HOAs such as Old Town and Squawk. Yep. So, we can't do anything about that, but we will certainly be talking to our state legislators about how can we create something that is an equitable solution for our community and provides that opportunity. The good news is that we did manage to take this state requirement and make it work for Issaquah. We kept development from impacting our critical areas while also giving flexibility for the rest of the lot. Otherwise, we would have eliminated 40% of the lot, as heard before. And we also worked with the state to define what a major transit stop is so that it was more than just a bus stop that Sound Transit or King County Metro could just take away. This legislation will enable homeowners who want to add units for those who need it, whether that be a child or grandparent or a renter or purchase. But I will note because of our lot sizes and because we haven't made adjustments to impervious surface limits, that really means if you are going to add more units, most of those units will have to be smaller in size than necessarily a single-family home. And that's the type of thing that creates natural affordability, just like I wouldn't pay for a 500-square-foot unit at the same rate that I would for 2,500 square feet. You will see those smaller units end up at a more affordable price point. That being said, some of them will end up being developed as luxury or high-priced units. And I know there's a lot of concern about that. I would say, first of all, we cannot control developers or tell a landowner what they can't do with their property. That would be considered taking. But I will also note that even those additional luxury units are additional supply, which decreases the pressure from demand. And it also gives more diversity in our housing supply. Right now, what is primarily available in Issaquah and around the state, you either have a choice between single-family homes or an apartment. And so, this provides that middle option for somebody who might want a starter home or something like that and gives more choices. And then it also enables affordable housing in a neighborhood-friendly design, which is either attached, stacked or clustered where one of the four is affordable. So, I will absolutely be supporting this. I appreciate all of the work that we have done to listen to residents and we're, I'm absolutely in support of what went through both PBC and PDE. Thank you.
Any other council comments? Councilmember Jiang?
Great. Thank you for all your work on this, Valerie. I know it's been quite the process and glad that we're adopting our version of it before the deadline, which is great. Yeah, I also wanted to say thank you to all the community members who've been super engaged on this. It's really clear to me, you know, even just walking around in Old Town and listening to your comments, Old Town's a really special place. You know, we've heard that from you all. You can get a sense of it just by walking around. Downtown Issaquah Association is highlighted by Main Street America. And so, we do really want to be intentional about how our community grows. I agree with Ann that, you know, Old Town really has an eclectic feel with all the different houses that have built over the years. I think it's frankly a market failure that the current, you know, housing market only builds basically three types of housing. On one end, you have single-family homes. On the other end, you have the five-over-one apartments. And in the middle, you have like the, you know, super skinny townhomes that were, you know, kind of shoehorned into a lot in Seattle. And so, you know, with middle housing, I think we, I think there's potentially more work to be done to figure out, you know, how can we encourage more different types of middle housing, like stacked flats? My sister was in grad school in Cornell and she lived in like this beautiful, you know, old home where it was, it was a stacked flat situation. That's middle housing and I would love to see how we can do more of that and encourage that. I do also want to acknowledge, you know, as Valerie mentioned in her presentation, we have a serious regional shortage of housing. The Puget Sound region is expected to add 1.6 million new residents by 2050. For people my age, housing feels, you know, incredibly out of reach. I personally would love to live in Old Town. I don't have $1.5 million to buy like a 900-square-foot house. And so, you know, we do need more housing options in the city, including in Old Town. And I also really appreciated, you know, the comments from members of the public who supported construction of ADUs and streamlining those processes. I think, you know, honestly, like looking at the places in the world and in the country that have the most charming feel, it is kind of, you know, where there's like things that have evolved over time that have, you know, community, you know, someone's like, oh, I wanted to change my house into a duplex or I decided that, you know, my house is falling apart because it's 120 years old and now I'm doing a fourplex where, you know, my grandparents can live above me, my kids can live below me and, you know, those types of things where you do see them in cities that are older, but we actually have a lot less of that here on the West Coast with newer cities. I also think that the four units with one affordable unit can potentially provide us with a unique opportunity to develop, to develop more types of affordable housing. So, all, basically all the affordable housing projects that we see are like, you know, massive apartment buildings because it takes so much effort to stack all these different funding sources, right? They're like, oh, we got to get a mortgage from the Amazon Housing Equity Fund. We got to get the IHIP. We got to get the Arch. We got to get the Department of Commerce. We got to get Lytech. So, it's like, you know, it's multiple people's full-time job to set that up. And so, it's really hard with smaller, you know, to get more diverse options for affordable housing, you know? Not everyone necess, I mean, apartments are great, but we should have more options for folks. So, I'm really excited about the potential that, you know, the middle housing could result in more affordable units built with this, you know, four with one affordable unit. I would also say I'm really interested in looking into the potential for IHIP to potentially help catalyze that, especially because, I mean, you know, I've done some like back-of-the-napkin spreadsheet calculations. The 60%, you know, getting 60% affordable unit, I don't think you would need like a crazy amount of subsidy. And we could potentially give, you know, a higher subsidy if they create a 40% affordable unit. But that's something where we could actually, you know, we have this IHIP money. We had one project that got funded, which was great, and I would love to see more of that. So, I think, you know, I want to, I hope that we can look into creative ways to leverage that to, you know, get more different types of affordable housing built in Issaquah because frankly, other people, you know, other cities aren't really looking into that. They're kind of just like, oh, yeah, like we're going to, you know, do these same types of housing projects that are happening everywhere else. So, ultimately, you know, I think it would be, it's time to ask questions like, oh, what, how can we use, you know, the IHIP to have a streamlined process to efficiently create affordable units, different types of affordable units in Issaquah? What if we could, you know, build those fourplex, like stacked flats, you know, two on top, two on the bottom that you don't have stairs taking up half of your house, which I live in a townhouse, there's a lot of stairs? And it offers, you know, the ability for folks to age in place while also potentially providing affordable housing to more people. So, I think this is a great start and I think it's just a start of a conversation on middle housing and how, you know, that our neighborhoods in Issaquah can evolve as our community evolves over time.
Thank you. Additional comments? And before we move on with the council mind, if I added some comments as well, I just really appreciate what's been stated so far. I think, Valerie, your work in this has been astounding. Most cities have really struggled with how to take these conflicting, in some degrees, House Bill language and apply it to their specific, unique community. Middle housing was designed to be a way to look at the existing stock and see if you can divide large spaces into small spaces or if you're rebuilding to put in more spaces with the same footprint. But there's been a lot of pressure by several groups lobbying the state, Real Estate and Master Builders Association, to turn this into just bigger homes. And I think you've really navigated those waters really well that, and I heard it in the comments tonight, it's got to be smaller and the best thing we can do is repurpose and reuse. And I think that, you know, the job that you've done has been really well reflected in the comments that you heard from the council tonight. So, what a difficult task. That's just astounding. Very, very proud of the work that you've done and from the community comments to the council comments, I think you've really nailed it. Any other comments or should I reread the long, long motion for you? I kind of have to. It's up to the city clerk. There's been too long of a, do I have to read the whole thing? Okay. Whew, I got out of it. So, if there's no further discussion, there are four motions before. There is one motion to adopt four ordinances and all those in favor, if you could signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Thank you so much for your hard work and thank you for the community engagement on this. It's great to hear the voices from the people who live here. The next item on regular business this evening is AB 9009, City Council Vacancy Process, Amendments to City Council Rules of Procedure. And the request of council this evening is to approve the resolution. And our city clerk, Tisha Gieser, is here to present this item. Welcome.
Thank you. Launch this real quick. All right. Tisha Gieser, City Clerk, I have a real quick presentation here just because it's been a couple of meetings since you last discussed this topic. So, I'm here to share AB 9009, the City Council Vacancy Process, Proposed Amendments to Your Rules of Procedure and have them for you tonight to review. So, as a reminder, you last discussed this item at the April 7 council meeting. At that time, you were reviewing the survey results of some applicants who had applied for the council vacancy and you were sharing your feedback and observations about the experience. You provided a lot of feedback, which was included in the agenda bill in the minutes for the meeting. You kind of landed on a motion providing direction to, I feel like saying goodbye to our community members over there. And you provided direction to us as staff, me as staff, to provide some proposed amendments in three areas. That was the verbal presentation length that was requiring nominees to have a second and kind of narrowing nominees. And the third was discussing some of the, some more of the mechanics of the appointment process before opening the applications. And then you had some other feedback that you shared as well. So, I'm going to share those three proposed changes with you quickly and they're also included in your packet tonight. And these are all, again, to your city council rules of procedure. So, the first one, the first change here is to prompt the council to talk about a few more things at that meeting when you're approving the schedule and timeline. So, you remember that meeting? It was the first meeting in December. It was a really long meeting, if you recall, and you provided input on the timing of the various steps for the appointees. But in the proposed rules, I've added a few things based on your feedback. So, in addition to just approving a timeline and schedule, you would also be prompted to review and approve or delegate approval of the application questions, whether you'd like to provide guidance to the applicants on the verbal presentations, whether you'd like any events such as the elected officials 101 or a meet and greet and what your vision for the question and answer session is. So, trying to air a little bit more of that earlier in the process. Also, your feedback on April 7 was you really wanted to make sure all the applicants are getting the same information and know they can reach out to you as their current elected officials. And so, language to that effect has been added in the proposed rules and the SOP. And then, you know, there were a lot of applicants this time around, 12 applicants, and ultimately their, the length of their presentations was reduced to, trying to remember if it was five or seven minutes or five to seven minutes anyways. It was less than 10 minutes. And so, some of your feedback was to allow some flexibility in the future. So, typically, when the deadline for the applications is not so far before the night where they're presenting to you. And so, it felt problematic to have the council weigh in on that. So, the proposed amendments would delegate that to council leadership. So, the clerk's office would provide all of you a number of the applicants and then council leadership would be asked to provide the presentation duration, which could be arranged, which we would then communicate to the applicants three to five days so it would have, give them some time to adjust their presentations. That's what's proposed. Again, you're welcome to offer other suggestions. The third thing that you directed us to provide some language around was that narrowing process. So, you kind of had two different types of feedback. One piece of feedback, starting at the bottom of the slide here, one piece of feedback was you were interested in making it a little more, needing a little bit more support to be nominated. And so, one of the ideas that was floated that seemed to have some agreement around it was requiring a second of the nominations. And so, that has been incorporated into the proposed rules. So, someone would suggest a nominee and that would require, they would require a second to be kind of, to be nominated, to be nominated and voted on. You also asked for some options around narrowing the applicant. So, there are two options presented in the rules and they're not, you know, they're not terribly creative here, but there's, the two options would be, one is you could choose to nominate individuals and then have them voted on. Anyone who got a majority would be forwarded on in the process. Or like you did in this last round, you could nominate a group of people that would then be voted on together. And again, if a majority vote was received, that group would move forward. And in the rules, it says that the mayor would, or if, I suppose if it was a committee of the whole meeting, but let's assume it's a regular or special city council meeting, the mayor would facilitate that before. So, when you came out of executive session, the mayor would ask the council how they'd like to proceed to narrow nominees. And then you would provide input on which of those two approaches you wanted to take, anything else you wanted to say. And that was some other feedback you had was that you felt like it would be good in the future to have a little bit more, I guess, verbalizing of some of the processes you were following in the meeting. And so, the language in the rules now identifies those two paths to narrow applicants. Before, it didn't say anything about narrowing applicants. So, I think it's helpful guidance for future councils and again, requires that second.
Councilmember Hall has a quick question.
Thank you very much. So, I didn't think of this earlier. So, for nominating, if we're requiring a second to nominate a candidate, is it the same as like making a motion where you can't speak to your motion until it's been seconded? Is that how it would be?
Yes.
Here, okay, thanks.
So, I've shared the proposal regarding those three main areas that you provided direction on, but you also had some other feedback, which was also based on those survey responses. And so, that feedback, and it's listed here on the screen, but again, consistent information, meeting layout, kind of a consistent communication around, about the processes throughout the application process. Those things are all captured in an administrative procedure that I attached to the agenda bill, which I think will be a really helpful document in the future. It captures some of the more minor elements that you had feedback on that I don't think necessarily warrant being in your rules, but provides some guidance to staff or at least things to think about or ask for during the process. So, there is a proposed resolution that would make these changes to your rules. And at this point, if you have any questions, I'm available.
That's great. Any additional, Deputy Council President?
I'm having trouble with this button tonight. So, it's not clear to me on section H, so one and two. The mayor calls for nominations. To be nominated, an applicant must be suggested by one council member and seconded by another. And then number two, when there are no further nominations, the mayor announces that nominations are closed and asks if there are any comments on the nominees. And then number three, the nominees are then voted on in the order the nominations were made. The vote is taken by voice and chil hands and supposedly at that point, we're narrowing it down. So, let's just say we have three candidates. The first candidate gets four and the second candidate gets three and the third candidate gets two votes. Does that mean that that third candidate is now out of the running? Or do you see what I'm saying? How does that narrowing happen? And because we wanted to eliminate... Because we wanted to eliminate the problem of the first nominee basically taking the vote away from everybody else. So how does that narrowing happen? Because to me, it's not clear in what we've—what we've outlined here exactly how that would happen if we had three, four, or five candidates, and how—we actually get to the narrowing process. Does that make sense to you?
Does each council member get one?
Not necessarily. So and councilmember DeMichele, there's—not that there's not a huge distinction here, but there—section G is about narrowing. Section I—or H is that final appointment. So the language is a little different in those two sections. So G is the section that talks about—the new section that talks about the narrowing of applicants. And what it says is anyone receiving a majority would move forward. And so—but you're—as a council member, you each—you can each—whether it's the slate or individual nominees, you can vote yes for multiple or no for multiple. Your each vote is up to you.
So under—you know, and that wasn't a good example, because four would be a majority. So I'm sorry, I wasn't—that wasn't a good example. But so let's just say there's six of us voting, and so I like candidate number three. So I withhold my vote until candidate number three. Maybe we need to—and I think you talked a little bit about that in here, about withholding votes, but maybe we need to make that explicit, that council members would only vote for the candidate they were supporting, or something along that language, so that it's clear that—I guess what I'm trying to say is, the first person nominated, gee, I don't want to vote against that person. Yes, I want them to continue, but I really like candidate number three. So how do we—how do we work that out so that the votes are distributed in a way that reflects the priorities of each of the voters? Maybe I'm struggling over this too much?
No, no, I don't—I don't think you are. So for narrowing, you know, it's however many of the nom—however many people are nominated and then receive a majority vote are moving forward. So in the process of narrowing, you know, you could move forward multiple people. There's not—a there's not a limit that's contemplated in these amendments, because in your discussion, it felt like you weren't real comfortable putting a cap on the number. Now—but when it gets to the final, making that—you've already done your narrowing, and now you're planning to make your final appointment, you're right, that gets tricky. And then order really matters. And I know there was some discussion among the council about that, about acknowledging that order. And I'll be honest, that I'm not sure how to—how to work around that. I mean, I did think about that some, but it's a—we need some mechanism to vote on them, and a traditional one, and one in Robert's rules is just, you know, it's nominated first, you're voted on first. But again, in that case, certainly the first person who receives that majority is your person. Yes.
I move to approve Resolution Number 2025-12, amending Section 2.03 of the City Council Rules of Procedure regarding filling a vacancy on the city council.
Second?
Yeah, I'm troubled by section H, because it creates a situation where it's a first past the post, and so there's a massive advantage for the first person to get nominated once you get to the final appointment process. And we have had a council that is generally collegial, but I—there's just a huge advantage for the first person nominated. And so I think that you could—the easy way—well, the easy way is when you get to the final appointment process, you do something where the lowest vote receiver gets knocked out each round until you—until you get to a majority. The other way you could do it is you could say, all you would have to—this way, I like less, but it's a simpler change, which would be on line three, the nominees are then voted on in the order of nominations. You just change that to random or by alphabetically. But something that takes away the incentive to be the first person to nominate, because I'll tell you, it was—it has been a factor in some of the appointments that I have seen over the years, the order in which the nominations are made. And it shouldn't be, right? So, you know, it's late in the game, but this was a concern that I voiced a couple of times ago that we talked about this. Like I said, the simplest, although perhaps the satisfying way, would be to either make them random or alphabetical. I think the way to do it is to just say, you know, if you have a vote and a clear majority is not found, you eliminate the lowest vote holder and re-vote. That's how, when I was in Minnesota, and we had incredibly contentious nominations in the DFL, and that's the way we did it, was knocking out the lowest vote holder each time. So I don't have a specific amendment to propose at this moment, but I really, really—this —is what we have in front of us is really good, except for this one particular point, and it's a nit, but I still don't think we should pick—we should appoint somebody to counsel based on who is the first person to get their mic recognized in the appointment —or in the nomination for final appointment process. Thank you.
Maybe I'm just not following the conundrum here. Because by that last vote, I mean, when you've nominated, like even if you're the first nominee, if you—you should already kind of know who you're going to vote for, right? So if it's the third person, you're not going to vote for that first person. So I guess I don't under—I'm not following how there's a—
Can I follow on that?
Is that like a scenario?
Let's say you've got—let's say you've got three nominees, George Washington, Abraham Lincoln, and Teddy Roosevelt, right? Everybody likes all three of them. The first one that gets nominated is—has a substantial chance of getting the appointment because they got nominated first.
Yeah, so I guess this is the nature of my concern, then. If we're at the end, why would—why would you vote yes on everybody? Because we're not narrowing anymore. Now we're just, this is who I want, right? Isn't that the idea? Or is the idea that we are still giving council the opportunity to vote yes on everybody at the end?
I'm just saying, to the questions of, you know, if you have—if you have three really good candidates, or two really good candidates, if you are voting conscientiously, you could get a—you could get a simple majority on the first one, merely because of the first one. There's—if, you know.
No, I think I'm following you, then. So city clerk, that I'm—is that—is that how—I'm—I interpreting that right, then, that we're not placing any kind of limitation on when a council member can vote yes or no on any final nomination, right? Okay, so I guess maybe I am seeing that. But that also seems like—let me collect my thoughts on this one a little bit longer.
So I want to approach this by taking the people portion out of it. If we had an ordinance, and there was a—an amendment proposed, and you know, we always try and not surprise folks, so often, we might know that maybe there's three amendments that are going to come up on that piece of legislation. But we know that all three of them are—like can't be adopted together. They all conflict with each other. You have to evaluate all three of those and make a decision to withhold your vote until —or vote no until the one comes up that you are most interested in. And I think that's the best example of this. Of course, it's much more difficult when we have an even number of folks and making that vote, and so that complicates things. But in general, yeah, I think it is our responsibility as council members to be able to decide between two, three, five conflicting concepts, whether they be amendments or people, and be able to make that withholding. So I don't see a problem with order necessarily, because—and I don't see what the benefit would be. Let's say we end up with four people at the end of requiring a drop off in order to get us down to two necessarily. So I'm not seeing a benefit from doing—from completely requiring a narrowing.
Yeah, I guess this whole question about the, you know—I mean, I was nominated first, and maybe that's why I got in. But I think the whole, like withholding your vote thing is very interesting, because I think, you know, on the first round of narrowing, it does make sense that you could vote multiple times, because you can advance multiple people. I think the second time around, there's much more of a case to be made that you only have one vote, because there's only one person that ultimately makes it. And so then, it's like, okay, it's pretty clear you should withhold your vote for the one person that you think would be best. And then at that point, I think, you know, going down from four, three to two by knocking out the lowest vote getter, I think then makes it clear that, okay, you know, that person then has to pick essentially who their second choice person is. So it's like, in some ways, a form of ranked choice voting. And I think it would actually potentially be better if we actually just did ranked choice voting, it was like, oh, here's my one, two, and three, and tallied the votes in that way. But, you know, there's only—they would only be like six of us, and that requires more amendments. So generally, I think my—and I'm not like 100% committed to this, but just, you know, what I think we could do is potentially, in the final round, only allow one vote, and then do the narrowing down. Just because also, you know, if you're the person who—you got one vote, and it's pretty clear that you're not going to be moving forward, then not getting eliminated, and then having to only get one vote repeatedly, like three times, is not a great feeling. So I think that, you know, also helps.
I think I agree almost wholeheartedly with Councilmember Gang. It's really simply a matter—if it was—if you only had one vote, then it's really, really simple. It's the idea that you have multiple votes that makes this complex. And all I know is, I've done three appointments, and I don't know if it was the first one who was nominated was appointed. All I do know is it came down to, in each case, two candidates, and much gnashing and wailing of teeth, and then a decision that, okay, we're going to go this way or that way. So I don't know that there's, you know, a notable advantage. Now, if you're nominated first, and you are the choice of four people, and everyone gets one vote, then we just have a very fast process, and that's probably an okay thing. So, you know, I think, you know, this idea of one vote and low vote person is out of consideration, and we move forward.
So maybe we solve this by inserting—and I can make a motion to that if other people—but anyway, on number three, the nominees are then voted on in the order the nominations were made. If we inserted a sentence that said, each council member will have one vote. I mean, it sounds pretty simple, but we don't explicitly say it here. So anyway, if that sounds—
I can just say it's pretty strict.
Okay.
Mayor, I think—and I'll pull this up on screen. I think we would need to make a slight change to that section before—the talks about withholding a vote, because that wouldn't apply. So I can quickly make an adjustment and show that on screen.
Is there any other comments? Or would somebody—
I do have a comment on a different topic, if I could. If we're done with that conversation. I was just wondering if having the fact that we have to have a nominee seconded presents a little bit of a problem. Let me just track through this. If there is a person that you want to stay on the good side of, like I have George out there, and I nominate him so that I stay on George's good side, but he's not seconded, I look good, potentially, and all the other five look like they have black hats on, potentially. I don't know how to solve that problem, right? But it's just something that can come up. And then we might be pressured. Zach might feel, well, I better second him, because I don't want to wear a black hat. I'm a white hat guy, right? And then we have a problem of having too many nominees that may not actually have support. I'll just throw that question out. If it's a problem that others see, that's great. If it's something that we're all mature enough to sidestep, that's fantastic, too. But I just wanted to throw it out as a topic of question for us.
No, it's interesting, because I was going to speak to this issue, too, and—even kind of—I think it relates to the issue we were talking about before, too. I think in my mind, just not being overly prescriptive. Because the reason I asked the question around, is it like—does it have the power and weight of like a motion where you need a second before you can speak to it, is sometimes we make motions here, and we ask for a nice second, so we can explain our thinking, right? Whether or not you actually believe in—whether or not you're going to vote for that particular motion, right? So it's almost, in my mind, like norm setting. Like council themselves will kind of decide what the norm is for this kind of first and second for nomination, for whether or not you have one vote or multiple votes in the final vote. And I don't know, I go back and forth on whether or not we want to be too prescriptive there, or let—because one of the kind of things we talked about, too, after we had the debrief from candidates, was we should just really talk about things more up here on the dais. So that also prevents—presents an opportunity for us to just talk about, here's how I'm thinking about how I'm going to approach this final vote, going to withhold my vote, and just vote for the one person that I think has risen above them all, even though they're all great. Does anyone feel differently? And then have a conversation up here on the dais. So, I don't know, that's kind of what I was thinking, was like, maybe this is an opportunity for us to have kind of norm-based conversations. But you bring up a good point about the kind of wanting people to want to be in like good graces with someone, and if there's not a second. But, you know, that problem exists for any motion as well, too. So I don't know, something to chew on.
This is different.
Yeah.
I think the thing that we quite honestly failed with on the last go-round was being way, way too inclusive and far, far too nice. And, you know, and not wanting to wear the black hat. But it's a tough job we've got here, and sometimes you've got to make the tough decisions, because it's in the best interest of the city, and it's in the best interest of the applicants. And so trying to, you know, let everybody down nice, let a lot of people down really hard. So we just need to be, you know, wreck—you know, own it, own it, you know? We own it, and so let's be a little more direct in what we're going, recognizing only one person can get that seat.
Council President.
I will just throw it out there. The city of Olympia uses ranked choice voting when they are filling a vacancy process. So I'm not—uh, what? Yeah, yeah. So they do it. It might be something we look into in the future, but I just wanted to throw it out there.
throw it out there.
Thank you, Council President. The potential wording for your amendment, Barb, is now up on the screen, or Councilmember DeMichele.
Councilmember DeMichele, the wording in brackets might be slightly more clear, maybe you tell me. So it could read, each council member may vote for one nominee per round of voting. I was going to suggest that wording.
Mm-hmm.
And then in that second highlighted area, just a little more clear, would not vote on earlier nominees in order to reserve their vote for their favorite nominee. So a quick point of explanation here, so this would mean you wouldn't be voting yes and no on people. You would just be voting for or not voting on people.
Does this reflect what you were hoping?
Mm-hmm. So I will move that on number two, if I'm reading that correctly, Tisha.
You can, Barb, if you want to, Councilmember DeMichele, you can just say, make an amendment as noted by the clerk's correction.
Oh, I love that. Okay. I moved to make an amendment as noted by the clerk. So, good? Okay.
So your second?
Second.
Councilmember Ray, thank you. Discussion on the amendment, Councilmember Martz, and then Council President.
I like this, and I think this is, I think this is actually also nicer, because you're not voting against anybody, you're voting for the person that you think is the best potential applicant. So I think this is both less arbitrary and nicer.
Great, Council President.
Yeah, I approve of this as an idea. I would be interested to try out ranked choice voting in the future at some point, but I don't know if that's something that I would push this idea down. Do we have the possibility of doing a friendly amendment, or, I guess this is an amendment? No, 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 I was saying just kind of include the amendment as a friendly amendment within the original motion.
Oh, instead of taking a vote?
Yeah.
Yeah, so Mayor, you could say, is there any objection to this amendment? And if no one speaks up, then we can assume that it's approved.
Is there any objection to this amendment? Not seeing any, so we can assume that this amendment is approved. And so back to the main motion, is there any other discussion you want to have? Councilmember Joe did bring up another point. Any other discussion? Councilmember Jiang?
I would like to propose another amendment, because I think there was another aspect that we talked about, which was eliminating the lowest vote getter. So is there, I don't know, do, City Clerk, do you need some time to potentially figure out? Or I guess maybe someone else would need to second it first, or...
And is that necessary to put in specifically?
So right now, the process is, as you observed in February, that if you're nominated in this final round, you're included in every round of voting, no matter if you got no, no vote. So I think what you're proposing, Councilmember, would be to eliminate the lowest vote getter in each round, would be, require a change.
Okay. Would you like to make that amendment, Councilmember Jiang?
I would like to propose this amendment.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Ray, and Councilmember Jiang, did you want to speak to it, or did you just want to open it up for discussion?
I mean, I spoke to it earlier, but essentially, it does make the decision more, you know, after the first round of voting, it's pretty clear who the top two are, and having, you know, the third or fourth or whoever person there. And it is, you know, nicer when people aren't, you know, it's not everyone voting no on them repeatedly, but still, I think, you know, for that person, just be like, okay, well, I'm clearly out of contention now. I think that's, you know, it is a kinder way to do it ultimately.
Council President.
Looking over the council rules of procedure, I do note that there is a portion in there that says that a candidate can withdraw at that point. So that might be another way to handle it, is just to mention kind of openly at that point. We've appreciated hearing from everyone in order not to continue that. If someone does want to withdraw so that they don't have to sit up, could be another option. I think honestly, the idea of eliminating the lowest voter kind of sounds more like ranked choice voting to me. But I'm not strongly in favor or against.
Councilmember Ray.
Just playing corner cases here, so let's say we have four candidates in the final round of voting, and one candidate gets three votes, and one gets three votes, and then two get no votes. Then how do I eliminate the lowest, the nominee, because I now have two nominees who are the lowest? Yeah, you know, I'm just, you know, playing the devil's advocate there.
Council President.
Yeah, and the idea of a tie, you could end up with one candidate with three votes and then three other candidates with one vote, and so that could be problematic. So I don't think we have solved that.
I appreciate Councilmember Jiang saying it's nice to, if someone's out of contention, and maybe it's just a simple thing of offering them what it says in the council rules, which is the ability to step away, and if they want to stay in and continue on a ballot and get no votes, that would be their option, or they could step off. So maybe the council, maybe the council rules of procedure already cover this. Thoughts?
Yeah, I think that seems fine, especially with, you know, some of these edge cases where it's like, oh, if you have three, one, 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 that's a pretty tough situation. So, yeah, I think giving folks the option to withdraw probably resolves the situation.
So that would not, would not require a change?
I'm looking to see, it sounds like the withdrawal is in the rules. I'm not recalling that, but if it's there, it sounds like that's a viable option. Who stated that they saw the withdrawal?
Can I withdraw my motion then?
Council President Walsh? Okay, sorry.
Yes, you can withdraw your motion.
Second has to agree.
I will just note, it's in the Section 8 Final Appointment Process 5C. It says, once nominated, no candidate is removed from consideration unless they withdraw.
So making a comment, to that effect, after the first ballot, would anybody like to withdraw? Okay, so then that would not require a change. Are there any other potential amendments, or should I call for the vote on the main motion, which includes the First Amendment? How are you feeling? Let's go? Okay. The motion on the table is to approve Resolution Number 2025...
Dash 12.
Dash 12, amending Section 2.03 of the City Council Rules of Procedure regarding filling a vacancy on the City Council as amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. Next item of business is regional reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Jiang.
I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. The Cascade Water Alliance Board will be meeting on May 28 at 3:30 in the afternoon. The Public Affairs Committee for Cascade Water Alliance has canceled their June meeting. The Mobility and Infrastructure Committee met on May 14 to discuss the CIP and utility rate study. Both those will be coming back to council when they're ready for further discussion. And June 20 is the date of the next Chamber of Commerce Board, where I serve as liaison, and I will pass on some messages from the Fourth of July Commission that were transmitted to me today, and hopefully we can get some great participation on the 249th anniversary of our country's birth.
Thanks, Councilmember Joe. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. I have two reports. The Planning, Development, and Environment Committee last met on May 6, and similarly, the only item on our agenda was the CIP. In our committee's scope, the CIP is pretty narrow, so we were focusing on stormwater projects responsive to our previous council discussion around utility rate setting. The strategy this time around is to fund operations in only critical stormwater projects, and then delay non-critical stormwater projects to help keep stormwater rates low. We were originally told that this option would mean a 10% increase to rates, but staff worked really hard and came back, and were able to get that down to 6.25%, which is huge for our ratepayers, and so we're super thankful. We also saw an emphasis on maintaining our current stormwater infrastructure, which we're happily, happy to see and supported, and the committee agreed with the approach proposed by staff. Our next meeting is on June 10, and we are gonna look at the 2025 Title 18 Policy Amendments and the Title 18 Tree Code Updates, so Title 18 Night next month. Next report, Eastside Fire and Rescue, we last met on May 8. We had a number of engineer promotions and annual award presentations to start us off. We approved a new board policy to create non-voting advisory seats, as you've heard me say, on the board with our contract agencies, so that's the Snoqualmie Tribe, Woodinville Fire and Rescue, the City of Mercer Island, and District 45 or Duval. We also approved some surplus to fix the suspension of our reserve ladder truck, I think I mentioned that previously, too. So once that's back in service, our primary ladder truck that we operate here out of Issaquah can get some much-needed repairs as well. Quick update on fire chief recruitment, stakeholder interviews are about to start, so things are about to go, move into motion. So if you are identified as a major stakeholder, you should have received a scheduling email with GMP, our consultants. So I think from Issaquah, that's myself and Director Martz, and City Administrator Bob Quitz, and Mayor Pauli. So if you have any particular feedback that you'd like in the process, as we kind of develop with the profile as of the candidate, let us know, or if you would like to also be kind of a stakeholder that they follow up with, also let me know that. And then once those interviews are complete, our goal is to kind of approve this full candidate profile at our June board meeting, and then things really, really move into motion. Quick update on long-term policy, so as you may remember, we've got this problem right now where we are limited in our ability to take on debt on behalf of the partnership, or the Eastside Fire and Rescue, the agency is, which has paused our debt financing strategy of apparatus. We have three engines currently that are paused, and it's causing quite a bit of discussion and consternation amongst kind of the rank and file right now. So it's still looking like having Fire District 10, I believe, take on debt on behalf of the partnership is the best immediate-term solution. So thankfully, they are open and willing to have the discussion of what that might look like. So stay tuned as we move forward on that. A couple other things I just wanted to quickly share from Chief Lane's briefing, there is this emerging, speaking of apparatus, emerging policy concern in the U.S. Senate right now around kind of rising costs and long backlogs and delays of fire apparatus, so engines, ladder trucks, even a cars to some extent. The market is really controlled by like three main providers of these kinds of vehicles. It was recently highlighted in the New York Times, I could send you the piece if you'd like, but you'll likely see some conversation happening at the national level. We've been encouraged to, whenever we bump into our federal delegation, to highlight this problem with them, too, because this is something they'd like to see kind of solutions happen at the federal level. So just an FYI, and if you'd like to chat about it more, let me know. And then mark your calendars for the EFER picnic on August 16, from 12 to 4, at Remlinger Farms this year, so it'll be really fun. Anyways, that concludes my report. Thanks.
Okay, Councilmember Ray.
Well, as mentioned earlier, the Fourth of July Commission had our first meeting on May 12. The Commission is focused on planning the 2026 Semi-Quintennial or the 250th Anniversary of the United States Declaration of Independence. In addition to the larger mission of planning for this semi-Quintennial, the Commission has spun up a subcommittee that is focused on planning the 2025 Fourth of July Celebration and Parade. We have much work to do in a short time to get ready for the 2025 celebration, and are looking for volunteers and parade participants. The subcommittee is meeting on a weekly basis until the Fourth of July, and the Commission is meeting on a monthly basis with our next meeting on June 9. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Martz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee met on Wednesday, May 14. However, I've only been back for less than 48 hours, so I haven't had a chance to watch or find out how that meeting went, but I will share it with the council to see if there's anything that we need to provide feedback on. Tomorrow night, the City Council Services Safety and Parks Committee will meet here at 6:30 PM in council chambers. We will be discussing COM 0126 Capital Improvement Plan. Andrea Snyder, Jennifer Ryan, Gillian Straub, and Susie Manzel will be presenting, and COM 0144 Lake Semamish State Park Sports Field Conversation with Jeff Watling and Rick Still. This concludes my report.
Thanks. Deputy Council President DeMichele.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. On April 8, I attended the Eastside Human Services Forum meeting, and we approved a motion to suspend dues payments until the impacts of federal cuts are known. And then we also authorized the Chair Paul Lawley to contract with Administrative Services and authorize the Education Committee to plan for a summer or early fall forum. So it was actually a very good thoughtful meeting. On April 9, I attended the Eastside Transportation Partnership Meeting. We heard an update on a lawsuit filed by National Coalition of Local Jurisdictions Dictions, including Metro, against HUD and the Federal Transportation Agency to halt implementation of an executive order preventing funds from being spent on transit and homelessness initiatives. As of last week, the plaintiffs were granted a temporary restraining order, so that's where that is, is in the court system. There was a briefing on PSRC's Regional Transportation Plan Development, and a briefing from PSRC's Government Affairs Director on Federal and State Legislative Developments, and the next ETP meeting will be held in person in Redmond in June. So it'll, those in-person meetings are always just great. On April 15, I attended the Seattle King County Board of Health meeting, and Brad Feingood, who is a resident of Issaquah but also expert on opioid use and overdoses, provided an update. While there was a decline in overdose deaths in the last quarter of 2024, there was an unfortunate upsurge in the first quarter of 2025, so we're still not out of the woods there. Feingood reviewed all of the programs supported by King County to reduce overdose deaths. The Board also heard a report on HIV/AIDS deaths, and that is where there is some very good news. In 2024, King County saw the lowest number of HIV/AIDS deaths since the inception of that epidemic in the early 90s. Yeah, so very, very good news. Finally, we also heard an update on a number of legal actions being taken to stop the Trump Administration from enforcing cuts to healthcare funds authorized by Congress, and has been heavily reported on in the press, Congress is currently proposing major cuts to Medicaid funds, so we'll see the outcome of that in the next weeks. On Wednesday, the Regional Transit Committee will be held with a focus on a youth fair progress report and pandemic service recovery results, and that ends my report.
Thank you. Council President.
Thank you. I have a very short report, which is on June 5. Both the Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board and the King County Affordable Housing Committee will be meeting, but the agendas have not yet been released.
Thank you. And for the mayor's report this evening, there will be an executive session to discuss collective bargaining per RCW 42.3.140 per N4. And as we approach Memorial Day, I want to take a moment to encourage all Issaquah residents to join us in honoring the men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice in service to our country. The Memorial Day Ceremony is a meaningful opportunity to come together as a community and reflect on the bravery, service, and sacrifice of our veterans. The event is free and open to the public, and I invite you all to attend. This year's ceremony is hosted by our local Veterans of Foreign Wars Post Number 3436, who continue to serve our community with dedication and pride. We're honored to welcome Rob Clark, a U.S. Navy submarine veteran, as our featured speaker. His remarks will no doubt remind us of the enduring strength and courage of those who serve. The color guard from Liberty High School will also be present to open the ceremony with dignity and respect. The service will begin at 10:00 AM at Lower Hillside Cemetery, and is expected to last 45 minutes. If there is inclement weather, the ceremony will be moved to the senior center. Seating will be available for those who need it, and refreshments will be provided. We also have two opportunities for community members to volunteer in support of the event. Friday, May 24, from 9 to 11, you can help decorate the headstones of veterans in preparation for the Memorial Day Ceremony. And on Sunday, May 26, at 6:00 PM, you can assist with the cleanup and removing of decorations following the event. These acts of remembrance and service reflect the heart of Issaquah. These acts of remembrance and service reflect the heart of Issaquah, thoughtful, generous, and community-minded. Let's come together to honor our veterans and show our gratitude for their sacrifice. The next item is the Good of the Order, and I do have some upcoming council meetings. Does anybody have any other items? I'm just going to check in with Deputy Council President. Was there a share-out about the second convening of local human services providers? We may not have done that yet. Okay, did you want to give a little summary of what, what happened?
Yes, and then you can add to it. Okay. So we did bring together, I believe it was 17 different organizations that serve human services in Issaquah, and we listened to updates. We had convened them earlier, about a month earlier, so we, this was a chance for them to report to us after the end of the legislative session. And what we heard, I think, was, is, was pretty devastating in terms of loss of income, not only from the federal government, but then some cuts also at the state level, and real concerns about the ripple effect that those cuts are going to have, because as organizations are unable to serve their full client load right now, the clients that aren't going to be served will be looking for help other places. And so even for the organizations that haven't been directly impacted yet, there will be a ripple effect going through our community as people try to navigate the new landscape. And then, of course, as I just said, we're waiting to find out what is going to happen to Medicaid, because that is going to have absolutely, if that goes away, that is just devastating to some, like Friends of Youth, almost, I think, 80% of their clients are people who are on Medicaid. So that would have devastating effects, and a huge ripple effect across other agencies. So do you want to add anything?
Yeah, no, that's a really great summary. Deputy Council President and I are thinking of doing this another three, four times this year until we get through that first federal budget cycle and really understand the complete impacts. And then we are sending the information off to the governor, our state reps, and our federal reps. So we send them the summary table that gives them the anecdotal information about what's going on in their communities to share, because a lot of times, they just, they don't have access to it, and we do. So it's been an interesting process. Any other Good of the Order? Council Member Joe?
Thank you. Seems like 20 years ago or so, council members were asked to go to the senior center and serve breakfast once a year, and we volunteered as waiters, and poured coffee, and served out the pancakes and the eggs. There is a similar opportunity available for us right now, though. There is a veterans' breakfast the third Monday of every month, and it's at 8:00 AM in the morning. It was this morning. It's an opportunity to serve coffee, serve them breakfast, serve those who have served. Some lighthearted conversation goes on between the Army and the Navy, and the Marines, and all the other branches. It's pretty entertaining. But if you're looking for an opportunity to help our veterans and serve our veterans' breakfast, check the calendar and make sure it's on there, and reach out to Kirsten May at the senior center. Let her know you're coming, and you'll be on the way if you'd like that opportunity. Thank you.
Great. Any other Good of the Order? Okay, I'll talk about a few meeting dates due to the Shavut, Shavout holiday. Next month's first regular city council meeting will be on the second Monday of June, June 9. The anticipated agenda items include the public hearing on the Capital Improvement Plan, the Newport Sewer Relocation Project. There will be a committee of the whole meeting on June 16. Anticipated agenda items include Capital Improvement Plan, wildfire evacuation time estimate study. The next item on our, and last item, is the executive session. So ID 1874, executive session to discuss collective bargaining per RCW 42.30, 140 per N4. This is an executive evening session this evening to discuss collective bargaining. The item is expected to take approximately 15 minutes. No action is anticipated to follow an open session. It is 10 o'clock. Would you like a five-minute break before we go in? Okay, we'll take a break. So we will be taking a five-minute break and then going into executive session at approximately 10:57. My computer is fast for some reason. I asked the City Clerk to move the city council and any relevant staff into a separate session within this meeting, and anyone who's not part of the closed session will remain in the main meeting. You are welcome to stay in the meeting until it is reconvened.